They're actually looking for four grand to buy somewhere. Is that gas on?
I think it's.
Very proud of my mind. No, that was. I don't know if you find someone who's over there. I think one is super. Well, it's not like it's multiple year hours.
Oh.
It's too.
That's true. They're all. Lions.
Gosh. Were you sorry?
I know.
So what is super?
At least. Yeah. He's got us, I think. I think he's between the two buckets. I'll say.
Yeah.
I just. I'm just. Right. Right. That's stupid.
I'll also see.
I heard. That's true. Wow. Yeah. It's a free cat. And I just got a backside. That's the one she is. Just got backside. That's always better. I wanted to eat for cash. So we can't say.
Oh, that should catch them.
Yes.
Should we see?
Sure. So we have. The right. Which will pay. Take action. I've seen. So we've got to say. But it's. I'm. I'm just. Well, I talked to.
All right. That's why.
Yeah. There's. There's.
Yeah. Close in.
And so they.
Good job.
I think.
Certainly.
See this. It's personal.
I think I think obviously. That is. Right now.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I just. I guess. I guess. All those are. Hey, well, that's how. It's. But I. Just. I'm just moving. See. Pretty good. Three years. Okay. I don't know. But then. You know. We have these way. It's. For us. We just. That's. Probably families. It's personal. That's right. That's all right. They were mistaken. It's definitely five. That's correct. Yeah. So you say. That's really. That would be awesome. So. First of all, it's. I don't know. Everybody was saying. Absolutely. It's. And then. Six months. But he was.
Oh, that's. Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. Guys, I keep forgetting. We may. Oh, I think. You have to. The actual. He gets to be adjusted. So. Oh, so. And there. We're going to. Let's. So. He's my wife. Yeah. She's. I know. I don't think she. She. I think. She's. Yeah. That's. Okay. That's. All the. Just. Be fun. Fire. Yeah. The. We. Keep. Okay. Now. I was. So. It's. Definitely. Two. No, right? Always. Yes. I think it's. Again, it just. Sorry. It's. Something. Shady. I know. Really. I'm proud of him. I said. I don't ever. Yes. I was. So. That's. What? Yeah. Oh, you see. Nice. Thanks for looking into that. I will. You know. So. That's. When you. That's. I'm.
And then. Next. To. That. Of course. Well, I think. Monday. Committee. Today. For. So. Same. So. Great. Monday. Today. Oh.
Yeah. I know. Funny. Yeah.
Here.
Yeah. With. You're. Okay. It's not. The. Office. I saw. That. Ah. He started. He was. So. Man. No. Okay. I was very. But you're still. Well. Yeah. It's all. But. We finished. Six. But. I was. Really. All. I think. It's. Was. There. A. There. Who are? Oh. It's. Yes. Yes. There's. There's. Say. I would. Be. For. Cash. No. That's. That's. You didn't be there. I'm. Like. That. You're. Pretty. See. Three. So. Three. Two. Yeah. We're. No. We're. I'm. So. Pretty. Right. Right. Oh. Right. Some. I think. I think. They. Are. That's. Going to come out. And. For. My. Cheese. This. On. Eleven months. Also. Thank you. This. Is. Yeah. Okay. That's. Pretty. War. I think. Okay. I think. You're. Right. So there. So. I remember. So. Better. It's. It's. He. That's. Right. Right. It's. Right. Okay. Yeah. That's. I know. I was. Just. Myself. I don't. Have. Yeah. So. And then. They. Five. Right. That's. My. That's. My. That's. Okay. He's first. But he's the commissioner. So he has to go first. After. He has. It was really. Very. It's. The. We. Are. General. Watch out. Well, he said. Out there. Seven fifteen. Okay. Well. Forty five minutes. Do you like? Well, you know. And. Uh. It's. It's. This is. Uh. That was. We. That's. Oh. Uh. Wonder. What? At the head with your shirt. Your metal wristband. You. Wonder. It's. Uh. The. Thank you. This. Please. That's right. Hello, Joe.
How are you?
Joe, how's life?
Oh, good. Oh, good. You?
Good.
Okay. Jeez.
I went around. This is. We're just making books for the group right away.
Yeah. Do it again. You. How you? How come?
That'd be good here. Even here. We don't. We think. So. Oh, my God. Well, it's fine. Yeah. I'm. Still on the red side of the ground. Let's put it down. Stop smiling. I'm. That's right. Why? I'll. I'll stop smiling. When she disappears. We're not. Your. There is. Yeah. I remember you. You said. You took your line. Oh. I know. That's. Okay. Sorry. What you? I mean. I'm. If. I. Do. You. So. I don't. Have. My doors always. I'll put. Except. I'm. Yeah. Actually. I think. That's. Oh. There's. There's. You should. Very. Or. Oh. That's. Free. No. All right. He's. No. I did. We're. Here. We're. Yeah. Honestly. Right. This. Is. And. Yeah. Say. We. Send. Our. That's. Okay. He said. Yes. It was. A great. Job. Well. Yeah. Yeah. I. Yeah. I. See. Oh, no. I. I actually. I. Now. It's. I. So. Everybody. Well. Do. Yeah. As you say. You know what? The. I should. But. Oh. It's. At least. One. Oh. That was. Yeah. Yeah. You already have. That. Four. Yeah. Beats. Oh, yeah. Yeah. You got. Everybody. No. That. Yeah. The. The. Me. Yeah. Every. Seven.
Guys. Oh, thank you.
Philip Brian?
It's. I don't know. His. Name. But. They call him Brian. I sent them a letter in college. I think. They fucked up. You know. Call him Philip. In the original article. But then. Brian.
Even when I. Just. Proud. Of. I. 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 I didn't want to say. I thought. I was. Scolded. This. So. I'm. And. He goes. And then. He goes. Learn. Look. And. And so. Then. We. That's. Yeah. Start. Fire. Yeah. 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 Okay. One minute. Let me. Let's. Start here. One. Again. I. Hey. You're. Fine. Uh. The only. I'll be. I. I. Some of us. It's. Yeah. Um. I. I. Freak. Wow. You know. Um. Okay. This. Just. Can you? I was. Doing. That. Yeah. Yeah. Uh. Time. Take. The. Just. We don't have. A. Commit. I. I. If. Uh. Commissioner. Er. Commissioner Garcia. Uh. You can. Sit next to. Mr. Er. Say. I'm on the highly distinguished. Uh. Other. No. Just. Think. Here. It's. How. We. We. Not. You.
I always get the chair near the gate.
Just make sure. Your. Microphone.
Ready for some democracy? Okay. Here we go.
There we go.
I'd like to call this. Uh. Budget session of the Hoyok City Council to order. Uh. For purposes of efficiency. I'm just going to recognize those members currently present. Uh. Counselor Graney is with us. Counselor Tolman is with us. Counselor Lopez is with us. Counselor McGivern is with us. Counselor Sullivan is with us. And yours truly. Counselor Jordane is with us. Uh. First up, we have. Um. Two of our largest departments that are going to be. Uh. Addressing us this evening. First, the fire department. And then. Um. Thereafter, the police department. So. Uh. Representing the Hoyok Fire Department this evening. We have the chief, John Pond, as well as Commissioner. Uh. Garcia. And. Uh. We hope. Both of you are doing well. Thank you for joining us. Um. Do you have any opening thoughts that you'd like to share with us? Uh. As we're looking at, for those that are following at home and otherwise. Uh. We're on page twenty of the city. Proposed city budget. And. Um. John, I would turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you, sir. Uh. Counselors, I appreciate your time this evening to go through the budget process. Um. I'm ready to go. Whenever you're ready to go.
Okay. Great. All right. Um. One of the things that I wanted to just take as an observation is. What do you? What is your? Initial opinion? Of your budget in that? It would appear? That your budget was reduced by approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from? Last year's budgeted appropriation. Um. By the mayor. So let's start with that. Give me your thoughts about that. Starting point. And then we can get into. Uh. The salient details of some of these lines.
Well, through here, there are a couple line items that were left blank. That was. Um. In error. So we'll go through that. It was an oversight as we go through this process. But I. What? I need to say is that there are actually ten firefighters in this budget that are not accounted for. And that's for a total of six hundred and twenty two thousand. So when you go through this whole process, when we go line by line. Um. It'll have a clear understanding at the end.
Okay. Why don't you explain some of those points? Where? Where? You have ten firefighters that you're saying are not here.
Uh.
Um. So you had. Um. For example, three hundred eighty eighty. Three hundred. Three point eight eight seven million last year. This time, it's proposed at three point seven. Seventy two positions at firefighter. But you're saying that's eighty two?
The difference in the budget is we had the safer grant, which is for ten firefighters for two years. Last year, our budget included seventy eight firefighters. So if you subtract the six, that's where you're going to get the difference in the budget. Or some variance of that. So even though this number says seventy two firefighters, it's actually eighty two because ten are covered on the grant. And that is for an amount of six hundred and twenty two thousand. That's separate of this budget.
More firefighters on apparatus, you'll have more firefighters on scene initially when they show up.
So, when we say six pieces of apparatus, what type of apparatus are we, are you gonna have staffed?
Uh, you're talking three engines.
Three engines.
One quint, which is up at Station Five, that's a combination of a ladder and an engine. And then you have Truck One, which is a ladder truck, and Truck Two. Now, there'll be Truck One and Engine One at Station One. You'll have Truck Two and Engine Three at Station Three. You'll have the Quint at Station Five, and you'll have Engine Six at Station Six. And their locations where they are, as I, as I pointed out earlier, is how we respond. Just Engine One and Truck One down here doesn't mean they're the only pieces going to any fire. We respond with a full response. Everybody just comes down and we just respond. There's coverage areas that overlap, and that's the reason why.
And, and that would be a saving of, that would be a saving, how much?
The savings?
Of just shutting down, or just shutting down one engine?
Well, you're gonna save the maintenance on that vehicle, but the objective here is to ensure that we increase firefighter safety in the amount of personnel on the fire ground, on initial response.
Can you put a, an amount, how much we will be saving? I mean, you're not gonna be running that engine. I mean, I'm pretty sure the firefighter will be there, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that will be a, a substantial saving.
Uh, yeah, I could definitely get those numbers for you, on fuel and, and vehicle maintenance.
Alright. Um, do you wanna go into more details on this, uh, do you have a handout or something you wanted? It sounded like you were prepared to discuss more about this redistribution plan.
The plan was presented to Board of Fire Commissioners in March, and they looked at the plan, and they liked the plan. Um, it's available, it's out there, I can email it to everybody, it's a large document.
Please do.
And I also have the station location and...
And the, and the Board, Commissioner Garcia, the Board voted to approve that plan?
We, uh, voted to, uh, uh, sup- uh, what was the vote, Chief? To, if we can re- the election?
To review the plan and, and look at it.
Well, so, so we reviewed the plan, we didn't approve it yet. Um, we do have a Board of Fire Commissioners meeting coming up on the last Thursday of this month.
Cause I was gonna say, July first is quickly approaching, right?
Yeah, no.
If this is the game plan here, yeah.
Yeah. So, we're, we're gonna, um, review it and, and make a vote, um, as to whether or not, uh, we wanna move forward with implementing it.
Do you think it's likely that the Commission will approve it?
I, I, I think it's likely, I don't wanna speak on behalf of my other members, but it's certainly a plan that I definitely support.
Okay. Counselor McGivern?
Along the same lines, Chief, could you take another step, the distribution of, of manpower with the, the medical response? The quints, the, um, attack vehicles and how that's gonna be handled?
Uh, the tac vehicles, I've already taken one out of service, we have action ambulance responding to medical emergency at this point. I would prefer to send a piece of apparatus if we're going to assist, um, action at a, a medical emergency. We can vary on which calls we go to, depending on the nature of the call, and that's completely up to, up to me or my staff when we discuss these issues or calls that we go to. With action in the stations where they are, they're able to respond just like we can efficiently, so it works out well.
The status says first responders will change then?
We're still first responders and everyone is still an EMT, and we still have a Class Five ambulance. Um, Tac One is still in service as a Class Five ambulance.
And that's out of Station One?
Correct.
So, if it goes out of Station One, it will be two firefighters or one with it?
If we sta-
For medical response?
If we have enough personnel to put on there, they can, they can put two firefighters on there. That's subject to change, um, per shift, depending on how many people show up to work.
Alright, so there's a ladder and engine in Station One?
Correct.
So, that's eight firefighters, two go out, you still have three per apparatus?
Actually, it could potentially be nine firefighters and a deputy chief, if you have five on Truck One and four on Engine One, and then a deputy chief, that's ten.
Can you just go over the distribution of your, uh, equipment and apparatus on an average evening? So, you're saying that there's a ladder and an engine at Station One, under the new plan, your proposed plan?
Correct.
And what will be at the other stations?
The same amount of, of equipment that are there now.
And there's four stations?
Four stations, there's an engine and a ladder truck at Station Three, there is a engine or a quint up at Station Five, and there's an engine at Station Six.
And, and just for the public listening, a quint is also a pumper?
A quint is a combination of a ladder truck and a, a pump.
Is that the same one that we bought a whole bunch of years ago?
Yeah, it's been a while.
I was gonna say, I remember when we bought that quint, that, that thing's been around for a while.
Yeah, I think we should get another one.
Yeah, you'll, you'll like it, or?
It is actually, it's very nice, very versatile.
Yeah, it's got the platform and whatnot on the back, as I recall, something like that, doesn't it?
It's a straight stick on, on that, it's...
Yeah, yeah.
Very nice.
Counselor McGivern, any additional questions?
Oh, except for the moment, thank you.
Except for the moment. Um, I wanted to talk to you about, um, some of your volumes and statistics, if you will. Um, how many fire calls are you responding to in a year?
So far this year, these are not fire calls, just overall calls, but I'll get the fire calls.
Well, I want fire, cause I'm, there's a method to my madness.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't really wanna count with the same level of intensity, you running off to a car accident somewhere and saying that's a, uh, the same as some four alarm blaze, I mean, I don't wanna call that, oh, that's two calls for service. I think there's a huge distinction.
Right. Um, well, each call has its own, um, incident number, so these are the amount of calls regardless of how many apparatus respond. So, if I have five apparatus respond to a call, it's a single incident, so, and that's the number that I have here. Uh, how many years? I have three years here available, if you'd like.
That's fine, yeah.
Uh, two thousand fifteen, total for fires was three hundred and sixty-two.
Three sixty-two, yep.
Now, these are not all structure fires, these are stove fires, food fires that are out upon arrival, um...
Yeah, but at least it's a fire.
Anything that's burning, how's that?
Yeah, that, I'll, I'll take that.
Uh, in two thousand sixteen, there's four forty-five. And so far up to today's date, there's a hundred and fifty-six.
Okay.
So, with the, with the introduction of our new, um, reporting system, it's all computerized now, we were able to go through and start to really define the calls and put them in specific order, and what the type of calls are and the nature of the calls. That's why I'm going back three years, um, I can go back further, but calls were put into the system differently back then.
That's sufficient.
Yeah, it works better.
Okay, so now let's break down so we can glean a little bit, uh, so now we have from stove fire to the proverbial four alarm blaze.
Right.
Um, how many structure fires, like the house, the garage, the buildings, the...
There's different categories in here, but I can give you-
Well, educate us then, wha- wha-
Okay.
What would you consider quote-unquote "serious" fires versus, you know, uh, the kitchen stove over, overdid itself?
It depends on the way that it's put into the system, so if you're looking for numbers, like, that'd be difficult. Serious fires, if we pull up with a full initial alarm, you have, you know, two pumps, a truck, we call for another, two pumps and a truck.
Okay, how many of those did we have? How many of those did we have?
It doesn't break it down by that, just has structure fires.
Well, as Chief, just approximately of the three hundred and sixty-two, what would, of that three hundred and sixty-two of quote-unquote "fires", how many would you classify as, this is a pretty serious event?
Pretty serious event, I would say probably eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve a year?
Yes.
Okay.
But, for me, a, a single room and content fire is not a big serious event because we go in there and put it out. When you're talking serious event, we're talking about one oh six Northeast Street.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, which...
Yeah, it's hard to disseminate with...
Right, and obviously, if you get there and you put it out, it prevents it from being into a big situation, right? Um, but what I'm, I'm thinking of, something that's using your judgment as a professional, what you would consider, you know, and then, uh, these, now, is this also include false calls too, or is this something you get there and, you know, it was really not much of anything?
Right, I, like, if it's a, a, a cooking fire and it's out on arrival, you show up, we just check the area, make sure that there's no extension or, or hotspots.
Okay.
And it's already out, we just make sure it's out all the way.
So, would you say, cause I wanna be a little more generous than eight to twelve, would you say that something that was like reasonably, moderately, serious, um, I'm just trying to gauge the level of activity.
I'd say-
Maybe ten percent, twenty percent of those, thirty percent?
I would say, let's, let's say ten percent, that'd be...
Alright.
Um... Fifteen to thirty.
Okay, alright. Okay, now, um, we have the, what we also know as these, uh, first responder calls, this is the, the quints or these engines that are going out to, uh, car accidents, um, how many of those do we have?
Now, car, going out to a car accident using the jaws of life is different than going to a car accident and doing an EMS call.
That, that's what I wa- I, I expect you guys to go out on jaws of life, right? You guys have the equipment, you're trained, those totally, but I'm trying to gauge, and we looked at this, you know, sort of year over year, how many of these you're just sort of, here we are because we think we can outdo the ambulance company, which hopefully that's improving.
We're not out there just to outdo the ambulance companies, we're there to respond because somebody needs assistance. Um, right now with Action, their, their, uh, average response time is less than six minutes to EMS calls now, so that's a huge improvement. Um, as far as us, so far this year, we have, uh... I'll, I'll put under rescue, emergency, medical response, ambulance, EMS, uh, one thousand twenty-eight we've responded to.
Okay.
Medical emergencies.
Just this year?
Just this year.
So, you're doing about, okay...
Fifty percent out of, uh, two thousand one hundred and eighty-one.
So, you're doing about two thousand of those a year?
Correct, last year we did nineteen oh three, and the year before that, we did two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four.
Alright, so now with Action, having this, uh, close relationship with you, um, that's a lot of gas, that's a lot of manpower, that's a lot of wear and tear on these vehicles, to be going out to car accidents, um, is it really even necessary? This is very unusual to other communities, and this has been an ongoing discussion that we've had in terms of areas where we can save, you know, I'd rather, it seems to me, if we're having clo- you know, less apparatus or we have to make these dis- you know, difficult decisions, that seems like, Fire Department is putting out fires, is, is, you know, is more for serious jaws of life, these type of incidents, as opposed to responding to car accidents. I mean, I'm sure South Hallie Fire Department or some of these other departments, Westfield, I don't know, do they go to car accidents?
They do.
All of them?
And I, I'm not, I, I don't understand where you're, what you're getting to, but we go to any-
What I'm getting to is, we don't need to do this, and my, my, and I, this has been an ongoing, when I, when I first introduced the legislation to make you guys the first responders, I personally should've given this more careful consideration, but I, I asked, I was asked to do this by the Fire Department, umpteen years ago now. And in reflection on it, it never seemed to me that it was gonna be two thousand calls a year, that, that's a lot, and I have a hard time believing that, you know, this is really the purview of the ambulance companies, that, you know, if it's something serious, um, just, but every, every one of these car accidents, I mean, that's a lot, that's a lot of, uh...
It's not just car accidents, we go to medical emergencies for people in their time of need, especially now with action ambulance. If they're out on a medical emergency, and Engine One is, is in the station still, then they'll go to the next call, the next medical emergency that's within that area so they can respond appropriately. That's the goal of the system, is to have somebody respond, sometimes action may be tied up somewhere, so then we send a piece of apparatus.
Well, that, that makes sense to me, a bit, you would coordinate, but it would seem like now that we've forged a good relationship, because the problem that I experienced, you know, which convinced me to support this, um, which we did, was that we were not getting good response times, it was evidence to indicate on these medical emergencies, it was very slow, um, but that we needed to get to a point where, um, we needed to fix the problem. The problem was the ambulance companies were not doing a good enough job, because really, if the ambulance company's doing its job, this is not necessary, right? They have the training and the equipment to handle these incidents. The problem is, they weren't being as responsive as they needed to be. So, the question is, now with action and fixing that, which has been for many, many years, are we fixing the problem or treating the symptoms, to use the medical analogy? So, the, the point is, why aren't we just getting the ambulance company to be responsive, make action, do what they should do, and take this burden off of the Fire Department unless, you know, you get this situation where it's, you know, you're between calls or there's an overload, where you guys don't become this primary, my understanding is you're going out to all of these initially.
So, your suggestion is to stop responding to medical emergencies, is that your suggestion?
My, my, no, my jo- my response is that you hold the ambulance companies accountable with this contract to make sure that they're there as they should be, that's the real problem, it's not that, it's like you're trying to do their job instead of them doing their job. Um, it's like if I wasn't showing up to council meetings, we're gonna call up the Fire Chief and say, can you sit in Jordane's chair because Kevin didn't come to the meeting, right? No, no, it doesn't work that way, my, the ambulance company has a duty to come to these medical emergencies, they are an ambulance, right? Paramedics and whatnot, that's what they do.
We're a Class Five ambulance and every, basically, everybody nears EMT.
No, I, I appreciate that, but that's, the problem is, why aren't they doing this work for us?
They are responding to medical emergencies, they just began in, what, January, so they're trying to get into the system. As we work through the system, we'll determine how to best continue on with these responses. We should respond to medical emergencies, every other community responds to medical emergencies. We may not have our own ambulance, but why would we not respond to people in their time of need, especially if action's unavailable? We're just gonna sit in a station and not respond, I don't get it, I'm, maybe I'm missing something.
Yeah, what you're missing is there's a cost associated with that.
It's a service that the community expects.
Okay, the, again, it's teach a person to fish, get the ambulance company to be responsive and to be there and to, to handle that, instead of you doing it, you're, what you're doing is a Band-Aid to having the ambulance company is not doing it, and even though six months into having action, your call number is not down, the trend line is still there. So, it doesn't seem like it's having a material impact.
When it initially began, Action, um, we had no data from our previous provider, so we weren't sure how many calls were done in the city. So, when Action first came in, they had to ramp up quickly, we, there was a lot of medical calls the first couple of months that we were unaware that were actually going on, so we assisted them quite a bit in the beginning process of this, so...
Alright, um, we're not, we're just not connecting on an answer, and I know this is accountability, but the point, the point is, is that I'm trying to say is, I would like, okay, and what I think is appropriate, and I think taxpayers would appreciate, is we had an ambulance company that was effective, that was doing its job and responding to all these calls. You know, boots and, you know, belts and suspenders is, is not supposed to be the standard, it's supposed to be, they have, you have, like, we don't expect action to go to fires, right? I, I don't want them to say, oh, well, you know, I'm, I'm here, I'm in an ambulance and I happen to be on Northeast Street, so I'm gonna run into a building, we, that's your job, that's, that's what you guys are trained to do. And what my point is, we need action to do their job, and we need you to hold them accountable to do that job. If there's a weakness or they're unable to respond to calls, then you guys should be the gap fill, but just, just to send a truck, be, even though they're going anyways, what is achieved by that?
We're there to give a service, i- if you want me to look at the process and streamline it, I can, I just need to know if you want us to respond to medical calls.
Yes, yes, I, I say it every year, I mean, nothing has changed, I give the same speech every year. And, and now what we're told is we're getting better service out of action, that's why they were selected over these other ambulance companies. So, my question is, why aren't these call numbers going down, they don't appear to be, statistically speaking, it's the same, two thousand a year.
Uh, we had three thousand two years ago, medical emergencies responded to. So, it has, we have to have time to let the system and the process work through to get some data, to prove points that you're bringing up.
Well, alright, you said it was two thousand last year and you're at a thousand this year.
Yep, but then two years ago, it was at, uh, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four.
Okay, well, maybe we need to provide the council with more frequent statistics then, and that would help us in, in deliberating these things. Okay, so we touched on the fire prevention thing, but there is a cost associated with all of that. What about this car accident thing in there, how, how many of them are medical emergencies versus car accidents?
Car accidents? The sheet doesn't break it down into individual car accidents, I can get it for you after, send it to you, motor vehicle accidents.
Alright.
It's just a summary of different numbers put together on this sheet.
Okay, great. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. Hi, Chief, thanks for coming down, and I'm sorry, I was a little bit late. But, um, what I'm wondering is, what questions the Fire Commission posed to you relative to the plan that they will be voting on later in the month? I'm wondering, you know, we're looking at things from a certain point of view, but we have a more limited understanding and scope of knowledge as to what you're doing. So, what I'm wondering is, what the Commissioners asked you, so that when they make their decision later in the month, they'll be able to have the information they needed. So, could you share with us what questions they had?
Specific information or questions were, it's back in March, the plan was put together basically because overtime spending was out of control, and the Commission and the city wanted a plan on how we were gonna justify or actually reduce the overtime and still keep the same services, so that's what the plan was put together for. The Commission saw the overview of the plan, they liked the plan, um, I just presented it at a board meeting in March. So, if Commissioner Garcia could elaborate on it?
Yeah, no, just to, uh, add, when I first, um, joined the, uh, Board of Fire Commissioners, I came on very skeptical. Um, and after connecting with Fire Chief Pond, um, uh, very appreciative on, on how, um, openly and, and transparent and proactive, uh, Pond has been, uh, with, uh, attending or, or attending some of the concerns that I had brought up, right, I'm in this public seat position, they're responsible to the, to our city's taxpayers. Uh, the bottom line was realizing, right, every year, uh, I read the news when we're doing budget season, and we're constantly, um, you know, not at a break even, and tapping into, uh, funds to, uh, pay for our operations and so forth. How do we present something that is within our immediate capacity and think outside the box and propose something that's a little bit more creative, that not only puts priority to public safe, uh, public safety as a priority first, but also something that's being, that's responsible as fiduciary agents of taxpayer money? And that's what the plan presented, um, that, that's what the Chief presented.
I'm trying to get at, did you have some questions around how the plan would work that you put to the Chief that he was able to answer for you, you or the other Commissioners? Or it was the presentation given and there weren't really any questions, and then it's coming up for a vote at the end of the month? I mean, it's okay if there weren't any questions, I'm just trying to see if there were any, because I'm sitting here at a, a more distant perspective, but I guess what I'm hearing is there really weren't any questions. So, my questions are these, years back, people came in and said we needed the tac vehicles because going to the medical calls with the engines and the trucks, and excuse me if I use the wrong terms for the wrong things, but was way too much wear and tear on those vehicles, it was killing the big engines and trucks to go to calls where they weren't needed. So, that was the argument for us funding the tac trucks, which were a smaller, lighter vehicle. Then, a few years ago, we funded in one year, three trucks. I think maybe it was an engine and two trucks, or two engines and a truck, I'm not sure, but that was almost unheard of, that in one year, we would fund three major vehicles. And then most recently, we heard that the new ambulance service was going to have double the ambulance availability of the prior one. And correct me if I'm getting something incorrect, so I'm like, good, because then those new, very expensive vehicles that we bought won't get killed being taken out on two thousand calls a year that we were using the tac trucks on, that we're not using anymore cause we're taking those offline, and I'm not saying you ha- you didn't have to, or you shouldn't have, or anything else, but I'm just saying, you know, as each two or three year period goes by, we're confronted with an argument to do one thing, and then sometimes in the next two or three years, the argument is sort of the opposite argument that we most recently heard. So, if you're not inside the business, um, it sounds a little contradictory, so I, I think that's why you're getting some of the questions you're getting. I mean, I drive down South Street very often, coming to meet, meetings down here a lot, and I see four and five ambulances at that little station where there used to be one or two. So, I'm not perceiving a lack of availability on those medical calls. And I do work in a location where, from time to time, I see the ambulance come and I see a big engine come, and the ambulance people are already in, and the engine zoomed up the hill and is there, and I'm just wondering about that, um, effectiveness and cost efficiency and how that relates. So, I think the question is a valid one, now we're six months into the new ambulance service, they're giving us a lot of data, it seems like we should be getting down to only responding to things where we're needed so we're not ruining our very expensive equipment, cause I don't know when the next time we'll be able to buy one is, but probably it will need to be relatively soon, I'm guessing. So, I think that's the kind of balance, when we're not in the ability to, you know, and we're not, it's not our place to get into your day-to-day business, but from where we're able to see it from, that's where those questions are coming from.
That's a reasonable question, uh, maybe I can clarify. We respond depending on the nature of the call, if it's difficulty breathing or chest pain, we'll respond and assist an ambulance in case there's CPR going on or they need assistance to get, to help, uh, the person in need. So, that's what we've been doing, is responding, depending on the nature of the call is how we respond, and that can be changed back and forth, and that's why I said, as we go forward, I can pull some back or if I see, hey, we need, we need to go to more of these calls to assist or to make sure somebody gets there in a timely fashion, we can do that. But it's just begun, at this point, we're trying to get down to nature of calls that we should be responding to. Um, and we're going according to OEMS, we, we wanna get there for any calls that somebody's having a heart attack. We wanna get there and help, we wanna make sure we can help. Um, what if the ambulance gets in an accident on the way there, there's so many variables, I would, I would rather go on the side of safe than not. So, that's why they're responding. I'm not going to take an engine or a truck out of service and have, you know, three or four people sitting on that to respond to medical calls, it doesn't make any sense. I'd rather have that there in case we have a fire, a major event, they can respond directly to it while they're out on the road.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, Commissioner, thanks for coming down. Um, just, uh, just a couple quick, you know, questions and, and thoughts. Um, Chief, if you had eighty-eight firefighters, do you think that the brownout, or the blackout or the plan, do, do you think that would still be, be on the table? If you were, you, you requested eighty-eight firefighters two years in a row?
Correct.
I mean, and probably years before that, yeah, anyways. Um, I mean, if you, if you were, if, in a perfect world, if you had eighty-eight firefighters, would there be a brown, would there be any brownout issues or reevaluation plans?
Eighty-eight firefighters and six hundred thousand dollars in overtime, no. Um, in reality, I'd need ninety-four firefighters to staff each piece of apparatus appropriately.
No, it, on that-
Eighty-eight's an arbitrary number.
Right, but the ninety-four, to whose standards? I mean, what, what, the ninety-four is what?
Ninety-four would give me enough to have four people on each piece of apparatus.
But, I mean, that, that, that's, that's the NFPA, or standard, correct?
Right, and that's why the plan that I put together is to, n- nobody has to do NFPA seventeen, ten standards, okay? That's just a wish- That's just a wish list that we're trying to conform to and it provides firefighter safety. So that's what the plan is. We'll have four firefighters assigned to, to, uh, four pieces of apparatus and then we'll have five assigned to the other two. And one is the quint and one is ladder truck number one.
So.
So that's what the plan is.
Not, 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 not bringing up the order of time, again, if you had eighty-eight firefighters, would, would we be, would we be talking about brownouts?
I would say probably not, but I can't.
I, I, I know, nobody's got a crystal ball, I understand.
It depends if people come to work. How's that?
Right, okay. The safer grant that's given us the ten firefighters, do you think we have a chance of getting that next year?
Uh, it's, we put in for it every year. You never know. It's, it's, uh, we've had three so far, so you never know.
I, I guess my understanding from, from my, you know, um, looking into the safer grant, it seems that they're of the opinion that if cities and towns are using that to backfill their staff as opposed to increasing their staff, the chances of us getting it are probably pretty slim. Any, is that, would that be accurate or inaccurate?
I would say that's inaccurate. We actually, that's what we've been doing with those grants, so that's what that grant money is there for. The economy was, was bad at the time. Federal government determined that there are towns and communities that need that funding. So we applied for it and received it three times.
Right, I, I'm just concerned that, you know, the fourth and fifth time might not come because we've been using it the past three times for what we're using it for. And now that we're using it even to basically, I, I don't re, uh, did we have seventy-two firefighters last year? That we backfilled with ten?
We actually had seventy-eight firefighters. This year we'll, we'll have eighty-two, thanks to the safer grant.
Do you think in your opinion that the Hoyok Fire Department is too large, meaning the firefighters? Do you think the, and officers and all that, the trucks? Do you think the Fire Department is too big for the city of Hoyok?
I think that the plan will actually right-size the Fire Department, that's why I presented it.
Okay. Um, would you be against an independent study coming in and reassessing the size of the Fire Department, the officers, the staff, the engines, the trucks?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all.
Would you be willing to allocate the ninety thousand dollars left in your overtime to send some of that money to have that study performed?
That would be up to the mayor, the committee, whatever funding's available. I have no problem, uh, having a study done.
The ambulance service, just to touch upon that, that was brought up. We had two ambulances with the last organization that was covering Hoyok, Chickaby and Springfield. Now we have three permanently dedicated, coming from the, from the gentleman that owned it, the ex-firefighter that owned it himself, three permanently dedicated to the city of Hoyok. With approximately, I think he went all the way up to seven, possibly ten that would be in the area.
Correct.
I think to Counsel Jordan's point and, and certainly we're not, I don't think anyone is suggesting that you not respond to calls, but, you know, the Fire Department, the commissioners, Commissioner Garcia just spoke upon that and you said this publicly, is that you're trying to be fiscal responsible, which is ad- admirable, I think. So I guess, you know, which I, 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 in my personal opinion, I disagree with that philosophy. I think your number one intention should be public safety. You shouldn't care, you should be fighting for money, you shouldn't care about fiscal responsibility. That's, that's other departments that need to kind of deal with that, to counsel the mayor, things like that. I mean, I, I, that would be like the Health Department or the Building Department talking about, you know, oh, you know, we can't, we can't respond to the teenage pregnancy rate because we don't have the money to do that. I mean, I think that a, a refocus on, on that concept would, would, again, just my opinion, is something that you guys should consider. You, I think your number one focus is public safety. I don't think you have, I don't think you necessarily have an obligation to the taxpayer per se because they pay taxes. I think you have an obligation to the taxpayer to keep them safe, alive, their property. I mean, your patch says it all in itself. In my, in my, in my, you know, I mean, it doesn't say anything about taxes on the fireman's patch. Says to preserve life and safety and all that.
Which we're doing. I'm, I, that's why I said, we're going to respond to medical emergencies.
Right, but I just think that, I, I know, but I, I don't think, I, I don't, I don't think you guys should be talking about fiscal responsibility. It's admirable, but I just don't think you should. My opinion. I think you guys should be protecting life and safety and not worrying about the, let us worry about where the money's coming from.
And, and we, we are protecting life and property. We do a great job.
I know, Chief, I'm not, not coming at you to be a jerk, I'm not, I'm not saying you're not doing a great job. You are doing a great job, there's no question about it. But I mean, I continue to read about the fiscal responsibility and I just don't think that's, that's your platform. Your platform is public safety. Commissioner?
No, I, thanks for your comments, uh, Counsel Brezneren. Certainly, um, public safety and statutory responsibility is the, public safety then statutory responsibility, whatever, that is the number one priority. Um, and the plan and what we're, what we've been trying to do with the chief at the department is, um, maintain, working with what we have and advocating for what we need if we need more resources to maintain, uh, our needs, uh, uh, at the Fire Department and, um, keep the public safe. Then, you know, I, I don't think, uh, there's an issue at all with taking on fiduciary responsibility as the number two priority, um, after that. I think we want to make sure that, um, the, the Fire Department is operating efficiently and effectively as possible. That's, and if it's not, and if, if we felt that public safety was, um, that there was some sort of detriment to public safety, certainly, we'd be having a different conversation advocating for every resource we need, so it, it's, it's, it's not, it's not like, it's, I, I totally agree with you. We, we want to advocate for public safety and that's what we've been doing, but certainly we want to be responsible managers as well. Um, I, I don't, what I don't want, remember, I, I'm, I'm a taxpaying citizen on this volunteer board. I, we're going to advocate for public safety. I'm going to do whatever I can in my power to, to make sure that that's, um, met. But also I want to make sure that we're not being wasteful with taxpayer resources, um, as well.
There's approximately one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And I, and I didn't count them up, I just counted the ones that I thought were probably over a grand. Sixteen cuts in the budget from the mayor. That would be including an assistant supervisor, that's a civil service position, so I'm assuming that person must have retired and is not coming back?
There was a retirement in one of the supervisor's positions.
Okay, so, so that money not being funded for that position, we're all right with that because it's, he's, there's nobody there?
I requested that money. Um, it's part of a bigger forward-thinking discussion that the mayor's going to have in the, in the future, um, for negotiations.
Okay, Chief, up until, uh, December twenty sixteen, approximately, I'm just going to make things round to make everything easy for me, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars was spent in overtime. Do we know what's been spent to date as of approximately to today's date?
Up to today's date, we do have those numbers in here. Uh, two, we spent two hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars so far in this fiscal year.
So, and what do you have left in the budget?
That's going to be about, uh, eighty, ninety thousand dollars.
Is the, um, I mean, looking, you've been chief for a few years, the overtime, I mean, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I mean, is, is, is that good? Is that compared to last year, compared to the year before?
Last year we spent five hundred and ninety-five thousand, the year before was five hundred and thirty-two thousand and the year before that was eight hundred and twelve thousand.
Right, so I guess the argument that the overtime, I mean, it seems like the overtime's the best it's, it's been in years. Right?
Correct.
Congratulations on that, but I, I just, I'm not clear on how how lesser, fewer firefighters are, how, how that would, how, how, how is that going to repeat itself next year? Because I mean, you, I believe you made the comment that you, you're reorganizing the, the Fire Department due to the excessive overtime. Well, if we're looking at an overtime that is hundreds of thousands of dollars less than it was last year, you did something right this year. But you've had the most successful year in overtime in years, but you're reorganizing, reorganizing the Fire Department based on what you just said because of the excessive overtime. I, I, I don't, I don't, let's see how that's driving.
I presented in here the, the way that the Fire Department responds at the areas. Um, why the Fire Department, all the stations are strategically located. Um, and that's how we're going back to this. That's how the savings was with the browning out of Engine Two. We were able to not have to staff that piece up with overtime and just keep filling it up with overtime. So with the redistribution plan, it actually adds four firefighters and a lieutenant to keep the staffing up so that we can respond and we have an engine in every fire station as you need, an NFPA seventeen ten and ISO. Um, and we still have two ladder trucks available in the city and they're fully, they'll be fully staffed. So the plan is safer, it's safer for firefighters and it's safer for the city. You're going to have enough people to show up on a fire scene and fight the fires. That's why by having them on apparatus, it makes more sense.
So, so I'm clear, so is it, right now we have three firefighters and an officer and you're suggesting four firefighters and an officer?
On specific pieces, Truck One and Engine Five. If they come to work, you'll have four firefighters and an officer. And then on Engines, you'll have three firefighters and an officer. That's how the staffing is going to be set up.
Right, so I mean, I mean, in your, as the chief, do you want Engine Two in service?
I think clearly not if I put a redistribution plan. And that's why I said it will right-size the Fire Department. And that's what I'm trying to accomplish. I'm going to have safer firefighters and better staffed apparatus. This has been a sticking point. Since I've been the chief here, this is all I hear when I come into chambers. It's overtime, overtime, overtime. This is the resolution to the overtime. You either give me more money or not.
And, and I, and I have to tell you, Chief, you, you and the, you and the commissioners and you guys know best, the only, the only four people that I'm hearing that, that, that's a good idea is browning out that engine or blacking it out and, and across, across the state, to be, just, just to be honest with you. The, uh, I see that you are, we're losing a clothing allowance. Is that because we have less firefighters or, I mean, there's a decrease in that?
Correct, when they cut down the number from eighty-eight to seventy-two or, yes.
And with the sick leave buyback and the vacation buyback, I know that some of that is just based on assumptions because we, we assuming that people are, are going to leave us, um.
We expect four retirements in the next fiscal year.
All of this buyback is related to four people?
Correct. But there are als, also, um, there is also money in there for contractual obligations too. That's part of that funding, not just buybacks for people.
I'm talking about the buyback lines.
Right, but, um, it's not just their buybacks, there's contractual obligations for, um, incentive day buyback and things that come throughout the year, so that's all part of that fund. There's different items in there.
Do you think three hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry, I think, do you think three hundred thousand dollars that the mayor budgeted? It seems like that will be enough because we're at two and some change now for next year and with your plan, uh, that, that, that we, we should be good with the three hundred thousand?
Yes.
I don't want, I don't want to get deeply into the ISO, but you, you had mentioned that, I believe. I mean, can you, can you just, can you explain for everybody? I, I know what it is, you know what it is. Can you explain what the ISO is or I can, whatever, you know?
Well, I mean, you, I emailed those documents to you. ISO is basically they, they come in and they assess the city for fire insurance rating, fire suppression for the city and what we have, um, available. We are a class three, which is actually pretty good. We're always aspiring to get to the next step up. It goes from one to ten and we're a class three. The ISO came in recently and did a, they, um, overview of the city and they sent me the information to show what they had. I forwarded on to Counsel Brezneren. And I know the mayor had talked about the ISO rating has increased in the city and actually it has. Even with the Engine Two browned out, our ISO rating increased.
It was a point six nine percent that it increased. Wasn't even a full one percent, but it was, you, you are correct, it did increase, but if you actually look at the reports and look at the numbers, it's only point six nine percent.
Sure, we could, we could go backwards, but we didn't. We went forward. We have a better rating.
And is it one to ten or is it one to four?
One to ten.
One to ten?
But within that rating, um, when the gentleman came to assess us, I informed that Engine Two was browned out intermittently because we don't have the staffing. And his answer was, you only need one engine and a station anyway. So basically Engine Two didn't count for anything. In fact, it actually hurts the rating and I got, I got your order. I, I don't mind sending a letter to ISO to, to get verification on that. What happens is they take the number of personnel on duty and divide it by the number of apparatus that you have available. So we had seven and our minimum staffing, I don't know what that point was, let's just say it was twenty. They divide that by seven, right? So that gives us a lower number. So if, if an engine's gone, we're going to have a better rating. But I can get that information for you, I don't mind.
My email correspondence was ISO was the exact opposite. That it will affect us. They just wanted to know which engine and what station it was coming out of, that our ISO will be negatively affected if that engine's blacked out. And I have that from ISO and right.
That would be great if, if you could send that to me and I'll forward it on.
I'd be happy to forward it that to you. Um, I mean, and I don't, the ISO rating, the ISO rating, the fiscal responsibility, none of that really matters to me personally. I don't think to anybody in, in public safety, I think it has to do with more, well, I mean, the ISO rating doesn't really affect your home. Unless you have sprinklers in it, just so you know, okay? Which I, I'm assuming you must as a Fire Commissioner know what the ISO rating is all about. Okay, um, my, my concern is that we're, we're, you're talking about blacking out an engine that hasn't been done since nineteen seventy-six. I mean, and, and I, and I'm just not, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. I've, there's many, I got about six orders on that issue on the fifteenth. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's just an absolute, absolute shame. Has nothing to do with the fire, has nothing to do with anything. I mean, I would like to, we've been talking, I'd like to see the Fire Department have its own ambulance service. But that, that, and that, that's not happening. It doesn't look like it's going to happen. Uh, I mean, we have an ambulance service now that is dedicated to the city of Hoyok with three full-time ambulances. Do we need to send the tactical vehicles or an engine? My opinion, no. I mean, why? Why spend the gas? Why risk a firefighter getting injured? If we have three dedicated firefighters, three dedicated ambulances, uh, ambulances, my apologies. I mean, I, I just, it just, it, and, and I have had conversations with several municipalities throughout the Commonwealth that are, that are kind of surprised at the, at the position that the commissioners and the Fire Chief has on this matter. To be, and I, I, I personally, I, it's not, there's nothing, I'm not, I'm sorry that this is, seems personal, it's not. I mean, you know, I, I got a home in Hoyok, I got a family in Hoyok. I mean, we, we all want to be safe at night. Fiscal responsibility is, again, not, not, if, if said fiscal responsibility on your patch, then, then fine, but it doesn't. Um, thank you, Counsel President.
Sure, Counsel Grady.
Yeah, Chief, I just want to address something that was said tonight regarding the ambulance service and the firefighters responding at the same time. I think response time is probably very critical. And if there are two apparatus, whether it be ambulance and a, you know, the fire apparatus coming and the ambulance coming, I think it enhances the chances that the victim who is having a serious heart attack or having a problem, uh, the chances are much better for survival of that individual. So I'm in favor of you responding along with the ambulances to, to, to go to these critical situations. I think it's paramount that we do that. I think it's paramount that we provide this safety for our citizens. And I, there is no way I would ever vote or support anything different because I have been the person who was on the deck. And I appreciate what was done because I'm sitting here today because of it. So fiscal responsibility is out the window, but the survival of our constituents and our residents is important. And that's what's important to me. So keep doing what you're doing because you're doing a good job.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, Counsel McGivern was next.
Thank you, Captain. Um, Chief, thank you and Commissioner Garcia. Um, there's, there's no doubt, there's no issue in this room that public safety comes first. And I think part of, uh, public safety is the discussion we've had, which is, leads into a true budget discussion. Understanding the apparatus you have to get the firefighters to the fire, to the medical situation. Understanding the manpower you have to get, you know, to man the apparatus of what goes to the fire, the medical response. But now let's, let's see if we can make sure there's enough money in this budget to do what you're saying. And, and that's what to me a budget discussion is about.
Thank you.
Safer grant, how much is it?
A total safer grant. One million, two hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars.
Chief, and you're using it for ten firefighters? Does that include salary and benefits?
Correct, for two years.
And when does it run out?
It's, it'll run out in about, uh, twenty-one months now. We just actually hired ten new firefighters.
So would you, it, it doesn't go hand in hand with the fiscal budget?
It's not in the budget.
No, no, but I mean, the, the twenty-one months don't connect with twelve months and twelve months?
No, it's when the grant was received and that was in, uh, March.
So it'll run out sometime in fiscal, uh, eighteen or fiscal nineteen?
Nineteen.
Yeah. Um, I think I asked you this last year and I got an, an answer that wasn't the usual answer, but if, and I hope it never does, but if the safer grant runs out and the money is not there to replace the salaries of these ten firefighters, who's responsible for the unemployment costs?
The, obviously the city would be. Part of the plan is that you know exactly how many firefighters we're gonna need now. That's another reason why I have to have this in place. So there's no going backwards. I'm gonna need eighty-two firefighters.
I understand. I, I remember when someone sat there and said, we're gonna need seventy-eight firefighters. And I, I remember a time when it was, uh, I got a book here, it said ninety-six.
You can give me.
We get it. I get it.
Give me all I can take here.
Um, alright, so a safer grant is a good thing. But, you know, mindful fiscal nineteen, you know, not just the Fire Department, but we're all gonna have to plan if the safer grant and federal money does tend to, to dry up. So you, you have seventy-two budgeted in your line item.
Correct.
And the figure the mayor gave you is three million, seven fifteen, five, five eight one. That's gonna equal seventy-two firefighters?
Yes.
And the overtime is gonna be at the moment, if it's not cut at the same rate as what you did this year, even before you went into the new plan?
That's projected.
Projected.
Be about the same, three hundred thousand.
Okay.
Now, the safer grant is also, it helps communities, like if we're having difficult financial times, it helps us get through those, those rough times and into a better period of time where we could actually, um, support the number of firefighters we have.
What, what is a cost per firefighter? Average?
Excuse me?
What is the average cost per firefighter?
Uh, you're looking at about sixty-two thousand.
And that differs right now, I guess, um, longevity-wise, we have a rather young Fire Department.
We do.
With the turnover that's happened in the last, uh, half a dozen years or so. So that cost will go up.
I'm sure.
Seniority, you know, takes place in terms of benefits, new contracts and things like that.
Yes, sir.
Is, I, I forget. Is there a contract open?
There is now. There's negotiations going on.
And you have any contingency plan in, in the budget for a contract?
I'm sorry.
For, for increases?
Uh, they're not in this budget. Um, if there are increases, it'll come out and later on.
And just the capital outlay? You don't really have any requests, but I know you're not gonna tell me that these six, seven pieces of apparatus are in tip-top shape.
My number one priority right now is, is a ladder truck to replace Truck Two.
What's the cost?
A million dollars.
Hold this Truck Two?
Actually, we, Truck Two would go into reserve and Truck Three would get taken out to nineteen-seventy-eight. Ladder truck has none of the.
Hold is two approximately.
Uh, I believe it's two, two thousand and two. I don't know. I have it in front of me. They're, they're up there. After, I'm, I don't wanna just come off the top of my head, but after fifteen years, a piece of apparatus should go into reserve status. Truck One and Truck Two are close. So to get a new ladder truck now, it would help us.
Chief, if it works, we certainly, I, you certainly will have my support to make sure that the funding is there.
Thank you.
That means we're gonna have to look for more funding though, because we just learned today or yesterday that the state is not giving us the money that we thought they were giving us. Not sure if the mayor's, you haven't had your mayoral meeting yet this weekend?
I have not.
Okay, you can look forward to that tomorrow then. It's all good news.
Okay.
But I for one, you know, I know many of the colleagues here will fight to find the money to make it work because public safety is number one. But our fiscal times are a struggle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, before I recognize Councilor Sullivan, who's next, um, I wanted to just segue into fire prevention, if I could. Um, how many people do we have in fire prevention currently?
Four people.
Four people. And if we were gonna look at, if you know, Chickaby or Springfield or, you know, Westfield, these, West Springfield, like, how many would they have in fire prevention?
I think Chickaby has three, but I mean, if we're gonna look at other communities, then you could, we could take away apparatus or add apparatus. Every community is different, so.
Okay.
Hoyok, as you know, there are a lot, there were a lot of abandoned buildings. There still are, but we're working really hard on, on rectifying that problem right now.
Just refresh our memory on fire prevention as to like how many, like the duties of fire prevention. Now, we know that they do education, um, in terms of going to schools and things of this nature. But, um, any, anything else that they, they do as well?
They do pre-fire plan inspections for, uh, properties that are gonna be either updated or built. They go through and do all the plans.
Okay.
Um, uh, smoke detector inspections.
Oh yeah, I was gonna say, uh, smoke detector inspections, they, that would be that department, right?
Egress inspections, uh, inspections on commercial properties. I could send you, we, they do thousands of inspections a year.
Okay. Now, do you have to have special training to be an inspector as opposed to just a regular firefighter?
There is a certification through the, uh, Department of Fire Services to be a fire inspector.
Okay.
And, uh, then I give them authority to go out and write, um, tickets and whatnot, get that done. Uh, and I, and I'm sure, well, Councilor Presleyhan took off, but, uh, in the ISO rating, there's a new category and there's five full points available in that, and it's all for community risk assessment. And fire prevention scored four out of five in that category. So they're looking at everything in a more preventative measures and a community risk assessment is what we're looking for, um, to improve our community. I mean, the Fire Department's portion of that ISO plan went up drastically due to the fact that fire prevention is, is there and doing their job.
That's great, yeah, and they do an excellent job. Um, question is, um, if firefighters are injured or have a medical condition or something such that they can't be on a, a piece of apparatus, my understanding, at least it's been spoken to me, that there is somewhat either a formal or informal policy, some of these people are put into fire prevention. Is that accurate?
Correct. If you have a, uh, physician's note that says you can perform light duty, um, come in and do clerical work at, we've, uh, got rid of a lot of our old documents. We've actually scanned them into digital format to save them for the future. Um, and a lot of other things around the station have been accomplished with people that are on light duty. So after sixty days of firefighters out injured on duty, then we call them back with physician's restrictions and put them in there to do light duty work. Very helpful.
Okay. Um, but that's obviously one more person though that you don't have for the truck, so that creates sort of a squeeze on you though, I would assume, right?
Well, they're out of, they're out of work anyways, so I just leave them home or should I bring them in?
No, I, so you would be, like, for example, if you have, uh, if you're not injured on duty, you just have a medical condition that's not attributable to work. Um, you're allowed to stay home otherwise, uh, for, with free wages?
For up to sixty days if it's an injured, if you're injured on duty.
No, no, I'm not talking about people injured on duty. That I understand. You know, you, you get hurt in the line of work. I'm talking about individuals that have medical conditions unrelated to their work.
If they have a physician's note and they have the time available, then they can take time off, yes.
Okay, for, alright. But, uh, what I'm saying is what if they don't have the time? You just put them in fire prevention?
No, why would I do that?
What happens to those individuals?
They can take FMLA. They can figure out whatever. I don't know what you're getting to.
Well, what I'm getting to is if you have people with, uh, medical conditions that, um, they can't, um, it's not, again, not work-related or injured on duty, um, are they being put on medical leave on FMLA or are they beginning, are they given light duty?
They, it depends, I mean, you can go on FMLA, um, by law. Um, and if, it's my discretion if they wanna come in and do light duty, if I give them light duty or not. If they're gonna be in, in there to help us, it's not a, it's not perpetual. They can't be in there for ten years.
Well, no, 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 but I was, I was talking like a year or less.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I would keep somebody out even that. I mean, I don't know. I haven't had to, I haven't run into that, so.
Really? You, you haven't seen that situation? Alright. I'll, I'll speak to you offline about a couple. Um, because I, I get phone calls and I'd like to pass a couple of them along to you that I, I'd be interested to share with you, just to bring to your attention. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Councilor Sullivan. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thanks. Uh, Chief, I just got, this is kind of a big picture question, not a single line item thing, but in listening, I, a, a lot of the staffing things we talk about are, um, three firefighters or four firefighters and one officer per apparatus and, uh, so on down the, the line. But when I, when I look at the department composition, we've got seventy-two or seventy-eight firefighters and we've got thirty-eight officers, which is like a two-to-one ratio. Uh, the, it just seems like we're top-heavy in management. I mean, we, we've got between deputies, captains and lieutenants, it adds up to thirty-eight to supervise seventy-two or seventy-eight people. It, it just seems like the management end is, is top-heavy. Can you?
That, I mean, actually, it's eighty-two firefighters and each piece of apparatus has to have an officer. Um, and then they oversee the two, three or four firefighters on a piece of apparatus, depending on what the staffing is. And then when you're looking at deputy chiefs, you have one for every group. There's four groups. Um, one is the executive officer and the other one is, they call him, um, swing deputy. He'll fill in for any overtime, instead of having overtime, he'll fill in for any deputies that are on vacation or out or whatnot and at the same time learn the job and respond to calls in uptown areas if, if he's not filling in for the deputy chiefs. Um, and captains, there's, there has to be a captain for every piece of apparatus. You have a training captain. You have a captain in, in fire prevention. Uh, and then lieutenants, you need a lieutenant for every, there's four shifts or four groups. And there's seven pieces, so you're gonna need an officer for each one of those. So if you do the math, you come up with that. And then there's also lieutenant in fire prevention. So it fit, it all fits in. It's just, you'd have to see the, the, um, how it's all laid out.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah, no, Councilor Sullivan, when I first came on, that was actually a, a, uh, first a concern of mine, but if you sit down, um, with the chief and you look at the staffing and how it, how it's arranged, it all makes absolute sense. Um, it's, it's very, it's a tight ship, for sure.
And I'm just looking at basic numbers and I keep getting three or four to one, but the real numbers are two to one. And I'm just trying to figure out where, 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 where the difference is. You're explaining part of it to me, so.
If you wanna visit me at the fire station, I can go over the organizational chart with you and show you how it's all laid out.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Councilor Tullman?
Thank you, Chief, for coming down and, uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um, a couple of questions I have, uh, one of them's concerning. I, I talk about it usually every year, is, um, injured on duty? Do you have a number right now that are out?
I don't, I, the last time, last week, I think it was three or four injured on duty at the board meeting.
Are any of these out for a number of long period of time or is this something that has to be, you know?
It's a long-term disability, uh, long-term IOD and, and going towards disability.
Okay, and that could affect your overtime somewhat when you don't have the bodies that are available?
Correct. If they're not available because they're injured on duty, there's nobody to fill the seat.
Right. And in, in the departments, and I know I've been to a couple of the stations, you have fitness rooms and workout. Do, do a lot of the employees, a lot of the firefighters try to stay fit and work out?
They do.
On a regular basis?
Uh, one of our lieutenants, Lieutenant, uh, Pensinol, he does a great job. He's actually been getting donations from people and, and fixing up a lot of the workout areas, especially up at Station Three. But, uh, yeah, they, they pretty much take care of themselves.
Okay. Um, 'cause I, I think that's important, a healthy individual, you know, physically, mentally and physically is important to, you know, to be able to perform the job and to, you know, keep your costs down.
Yes.
You know, when you're fit and you don't get hurt, you know, you're, you're, um, stable and, and, and don't get, uh, injured easily, you know? Um, have you been to a number of the sta, all the stations on a regular basis?
I get around, if I can, I get around to them and take a look in there. Um, as you know, we had some improvements in Station Six a couple of years, a couple of years ago, Home Depot came in. The genie just put in brand-new, uh, LED lights as part of a grant on the apparatus floor. It's nice out there now. You can actually see what's going on. Um, and we're always looking for opportunities to improve the stations. But yes, I, I will go around and look at them. The deputy chiefs go around every weekend and inspect the stations with the company officers.
Is there, uh, I, I know the station up in North Amster isn't still in pretty tough shape as far as the building itself.
It's still in tough shape and I would still like to get a new station. How's that?
I just, I'm, I'm just saying that the people have to work in these buildings and I'm just, you know, as far as everything, the heat, you know?
Yes.
I mean, the working environment's important too for people that, you know, after going, uh, you know, all shifts and, and day in and day out, um, you know, I, I think that's a, a important thing. I, I know money's an issue, but, um, as long as, um, you know, can, these buildings can be sort of shored up or kept in a good, best possible, what we have to work with, I think is good, you know? If that, that can be done, you know?
And it all comes down to money. I mean, Jim Crass at the DPW does a great job. Um, he tries to fix what he can with what funding that he has. And, I mean, in my budget, grounds and maintenance, we have four thousand dollars for four stations total, so. There's not much money to get things done. A lot of firefighters take initiative and do things on their own and, and like Lieutenant Pensinol and people like that, so it's nice.
And your, um, expense budget as far as fuels and maintenance, um, and the vehicles, you still, um, we saw the local person doing that? The, the DPW have somebody work on the vehicles if it can be done locally?
The DPW still works on our, our vehicles. Um, we still, but we have to outsource for certain repairs on, on ladders and, and pumps and stuff like that. So that's where a lot of cost comes in. I, I would still like to get a, uh, emergency vehicle technician as, in this budget or any of these budgets. I continue to push for that.
Yeah, I know that a number of years ago, we had that, um, a couple of individuals and it sort of got cut out and then we outsourced it. And it's probably weighing in, you know, benefits, saving money on benefits, but then you gotta send the piece out to get repaired. And sometimes that could be something that's out of service for a while. Does it, there's a technician that come here? Do you have to bring it somewhere? Is it, it's Connecticut?
It's Connecticut or, um, Albany, New York or somewhere out near Boston. Um, sometimes they come here, but most of the time we have to send them out. So it, it, there is an expense and, uh, a, a dedicated technician would definitely help.
Right. And, and this, but overall, the final question, um, and I, I appreciate you showing us how the, the overtime has gone down over the years because that was a big thing. I know you've been coming the last few years and we've been sort of talking about trying to keep that, uh, level or, or less. And it, by the, um, by looking at what you said tonight, that it has been dropping. Um, and you do feel that this budget with the three hundred thousand, that should be sufficient throughout the year, the fiscal year?
It's projected, yes.
Projected, okay. And, um, firefighters retiring, you said? You have projecting about four?
Could be four, yes, up to four.
Okay, would that affect anything with any of the, the grants?
Uh, no, when, once they retire and off the books, we'll get, set a date to, um, hire more firefighters coming in, so. It doesn't affect the grants. The grant money's still there and still paying.
Well, I wasn't sure if you had to have the certain number of firefighters on all, at all times. I thought we had that issue a couple of years ago.
It gets to that, it gets to a certain point, yes, if you go below a certain number, but as long as you're in the hiring process, um, then they understand that takes time, especially civil service takes time, waiting on lists.
And recently, and, and I know we talked about fire prevention, I think that's an important issue, and you talked about the ISO, uh, being in, um, with the fire prevention rating is, is important.
Yes.
Do you still have that program going on with, uh, with smoke detectors or fire, you know?
Yes.
I know, I need that, I see that advertised recently, uh, the, the people are still going out, and is that just homes, or is that apartment buildings?
Just homes, one and two family homes. We, we still have a lot of people that are, are putting in for the program. And when we, when the Red Cross send us smoke detectors, we set up appointments and, and get out there and put them up as quickly as possible. But yes, we still have that program going.
Okay, I think that's, that's important, and that's, uh, helpful with some people, you know, and the reminders we get every year, sometimes you don't realize it until something actually happens, that you really need that, and, and to, to save lives, uh, you know, we could see that in several of the, the fires that, uh, you know, the, the detectors and the alarms are, are very vital, so. But, um, overall, you feel this is a fair budget, and you can work with this throughout the year?
At this point, I mean, there were a couple of line items that were left blank, and the mayor's probably gonna have to send you, um, an amendment on those or update them. The one was the, uh, EAP for twenty, two thousand seven fifty, that's gonna have to be funded.
Right.
And the CPR account.
Two thousand seven fifty?
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Twenty-seven fifty?
The CPR, yeah, I saw that.
The CPR account has to be funded. It was an oversight.
So there's, those are the things you said there earlier that were missing out of the budget?
Correct.
Okay, and I, I wanna thank you and the department, everybody that works, especially we, we had that, uh, the other night at a meeting, and how people, you know, don't realize day in and day out the work you do, um, the firefighters, uh, to, to be basically protective of us, our, our life and our liberty, um, each and every day, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, um, I wanted to ask you, um, some questions regarding the fire pull boxes. I know this is a favorite topic of Counselor Sullivan's, and really, it does make a lot of sense that we begin the process of getting rid of these. As you know, um, this is sort of an antiquated technology, um, sort of in our anachronism from a time long ago. Many of these have bags over them all over the city anyways. So for those that have bags over them, and they look terrible, and we do get questions from constituents, at least I do, um, is there a process that's in, underway to begin to remove these? Um, 'cause I don't think we have the budget to fix those anyways, and I'm not so sure we necessarily wanna fix them, so, um, can you address the, the fire pull boxes, please?
I can look into it. There's no process going on to take them down, 'cause they have a bag on them. If they can be repaired, they will. Um, if they get knocked down or they're broken beyond repair, then they'll be removed. Uh, I can speak with, uh, Joe O'Connor and see if we can get something in place, and if there's any available manpower.
Why don't we just remove them? I mean, what, what purpose do they serve at this point? I mean, who's, who's at this, in, in two thousand and seventeen is running out of their house with these things being as ubiquitous as they are, and running down the street and pulling some lever? I mean, it's, this isn't the, you know, this isn't two nineteen seventeen anymore, you know?
No, I, I understand. I mean, this question's been posed several times.
Yeah.
There's still wiring under the si, under the streets that are connected to those boxes and, and.
Tie them off and cement them?
Well, there's issues with that. It's like a, a fixed point. Joe O'Connor can explain much better than I can. As far as the, those on the street corners that you go and pull, I see what you're saying, and that's where the problems are with the wires. I'm sure some of them can be taken down.
Alright.
But there are radio boxes that are connected to buildings that we're still using, and we still have. There's many of those that we.
Nothing is an absolute, but these ones that are out on the streets, uh, at this stage of the game, um, they're about as useful as public telephones at this point, you know, I mean, it's just, they're, you know, they were nice. Uh, maybe they go down to the warehouse if we wanna see them anymore, you know, but, uh, I, it would be appreciated if the department would take some sort of systematic approach to begin removing these ones that, you know, if they're working and they're fine at this stage of the game, just leave good enough alone. But the ones that are broken and you would actually spend time, you know, time and treasure to fix, uh, it would be appreciated, I know, by many, the, to, to have those, uh, to begin to remove those.
We'll take a look, and I will say the alarm division has done a great job throughout the years to keep these things functioning.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of them still operate.
Well, yeah, and, um, the good, the good news is, um, in, in another hat that, um, you oversee, um, the traffic intersection money is en route, you know?
Yes.
Uh, we have a bond proposal to make that happen, uh, for those ten intersections. And I know you guys have playing, been playing catch-as-catch-can, trying to get parts from Texas and here, there to these nineteen fifties and sixties systems, um, that, you know, they're not even making these parts anymore, so that's been very much appreciated, what you guys have done in that area, and that's certainly a credit to the alarm, the alarm division. Uh, Counselor Lopez?
He mentioned the CPR issue.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, so that was those two, those two lines. Um, could you, um, email me a breakout on those retirees in terms of the sick leave buyback? I assume that's just for them?
Uh, no, there's contractual. If employees have, you get up to two thousand hours that you can have, um, accumulated over time. Um, after two thousand hours, you're, the next year when you get a hundred and fifty hours for sick time, if you don't use that, you can sell that back. That comes out of that.
How much is that sold back at? Do you know what that's?
It's, uh, it's hun, it's regular rate, a hundred and fifty hours, regular rate. I could, I could have.
So if you get so much sick leave, they, we pay you a hundred percent of the sick leave after a certain amount?
After two thousand hours accumulated. It's in the contract.
Okay, that's a very generous benefit then, yeah. 'Cause if you get fif, I mean, once you get to the max and you don't take sick time, right? That's fifteen days of extra pay, right? Don't, do they get? I don't know, is that the benefit? I don't know. Is it fifteen days?
It's a hundred and fifty hours at regular rate.
Oh, a hundred and fifty hours, okay.
Yep.
Interesting, alright. And, um, so if you could just tell me the costs that are attributable to the retirees portion of it? Their, their buybacks, um, vacation and sick, I'd, I would appreciate that, um. And let's see, is the commission entirely filled at this point, or is, are we with two commissioners, three commissioners?
Three commissioners.
Three commissioners, okay. Any final thoughts that you guys wanted to share, or any other last questions from counselors?
I just had one quick technical question.
Yes.
So, um, Chief, on your staffing pattern that you've budgeted with three plus one and four plus one, for the staffing patterns on each truck?
Yes.
Um, on an average day, how many people are out, either out injured on duty or call out?
That's a good question. I would say four to five.
Every day?
Every day, four to five, on average.
So if that's the case, then this staffing pattern, so on every truck would be minus one, so does that keep you at the minimum? So that you wouldn't have to call in overtime?
Right, I mean, it depends on what you call the minimum, uh, three on apparatus or four?
Yeah, let's say.
Yes.
Three.
Yes, I will not go below three on any piece of apparatus. Other communities go with one person on a ladder truck. Doesn't happen in Holyoke.
Okay.
It's not gonna happen when I'm here.
So that's how you, okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Garcia, any final thoughts?
Yeah, final thoughts. I just wanted to add, this is my first budget hearing, and, uh, I, I just wanna let you guys know that I think that this has been a, a great experience, to say the least. I think, um, a lot of the concerns, Counselor Jordane, what you shared, uh, Vacan, uh, what you shared, um, uh, you, you raised a lot of interesting points. I certainly wanna be a, a proactive commissioner. I don't wanna waste a day. So any innovative solution or thought or idea that anyone may have in this body moving forward for the next fiscal year, be it next year or two years, maybe even a three-year plan, uh, contingent on how complex the issue is, I certainly wanna look into it and see how we can, um, uh, look into resolving, uh, some of that, because, uh, you know, at, at the end of the day, yeah, public safety, number one, fiduciary responsibility, number two. No matter how much Counselor President may disagree with me or not, anything less than that, I think is just plain irresponsible, which kind of concerns me, but whatever the case, um, uh, thank you. Um, you brought up some very interesting points. I do wanna follow up with you guys on some of the things you brought up.
Please do.
There's some things Vacan, you mentioned the last meeting we were here to, even today, that you and I actually agree on a, a lot of things. Um, so let's, uh, definitely keep the conversation going and see how we can make, uh, proactive changes at the fire department.
Well, as we know, no money, no mission, right? That's right.
I don't know, I, I think so.
I think so. Nobody works for free. I don't think so. Um, God bless everything you do, all the people that work for you, and, uh, keep us safe.
Thank you.
Any other final thoughts, Chief?
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to say that, uh, I don't, I am concerned about public safety. Obviously, that's my job. To think that somebody would assume that I don't is ridiculous in itself. And I'm also concerned about firefighter safety, which is why this plan is implemented. So we can get the study, we can do whatever we want, we can, you know, have taxpayer money go out and, and pay for that. I'm all for that. But remember, it's gonna come in line with this plan, I guarantee. Because this is the way that it should be ran, and this is why we're streamlining things, and we're gonna get it done the right way. Um, I've been here five years, going on six now. Apparently, I'm a, a pioneer in things around here, 'cause I seem to be stepping into everything and, and getting bumped around and, and getting beat up on different ends, no matter what I do. But I'm going to make change, no matter what, because that's what has to happen. Things going, are moving forward. You're talking about street boxes to cell phones. We have to get, we have to move forward into the modern era. You know, and now I'm, I'm willing to do that. Somebody has to be in charge. I don't mind. So I just wanna let you know that I'm gonna do everything I can. I'm concerned about firefighter safety, public safety, and I would do everything that I can in my power to ensure that that's done. And if it's not, if there's a problem, if I think we don't have public safety, or we don't have enough firefighters to be safe, I'm going to let you know.
Yeah, same here.
I will be standing out there with everybody else complaining. Trust me, I'll let you know. The city pays me to do the job. I'm doing the job. I appreciate all your time. You've been very gracious. If you have any questions or any follow-up, please call me, set up a meeting, whatever you want. I'm always available to any one of you, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. We really appreciate it, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, sir. Alright, we wish you well, and we get to hear from the other half of our public safety team, our police department. And we have the pleasure of having the Chief here, as well as Sergeant Hart.
Take care.
Welcome, gentlemen. How are you this evening?
Very good, sir. Thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you, thank you. So, um, it's that fa, your favorite time of the year again. Um, you get to come and see your old friends at the city council and discuss, uh, the, your annual municipal appropriation. Um, before we get into the salient details of pages eighteen and nineteen of the city budget that refer to the police department, do you have any final, or, excuse me, any, uh, opening thoughts, or any things you'd like to share, uh, with us, um, or any reports, or I don't know, maybe you have handouts or anything, um, but, uh, feel, feel free, Chief. This, the floor is yours.
I have no handouts. Uh, I do just wanted to reiterate, I appreciate the council's support on the radio system we have.
Hmm.
Um, we're not far out from at least getting the police department and the fire department operational. And then after that will come DPW and Parks and Rec, but we're, we're, we're close to the end for that.
Oh, super.
So, and, and I'm hoping to get my new cars in within another month.
Oh, super. In fact, I think, I forget who it was, but one of the counselors filed an order that was sent to public safety. I think, oh, mine was Counselor Lopez, and I, we asked a copy, go over to you, what basically was a, uh, status update on how the, uh, the communications bond and all of that is going. So maybe when you have a moment, you could write us up a little memo or something too. Um, and then if Counselor Lopez and others wanna take it from there, um, you could just kind of give us an update, and when you're projected to be, sort of go live with that, that would be helpful.
Certainly.
Great. Um, Sergeant Hart, any opening thoughts, or we'll just get a, get our arms deep into it right here? Okay, great. Um, yes, Counselor Grady, go ahead.
Uh, just, uh, initially, uh, Chief or Sergeant, uh, I know there's an asterisk on, uh, line item six, or five-one-five-oh-five, I think it is, sick leave buyback. No, it's, I'm sorry, the, uh.
Time owed buyback? Five-one-five-ten, I think it is. Yeah, sick leave buyback.
Sick leave buyback, and I know the, uh, you had six and a half retirements in two thousand seventeen, and it says that this is assuming eight and a half retirements. We have eight, eight or nine people retiring this coming fiscal year?
We actually have three retirements that we have to pay for in eighteen, and it looks like, now, this is a, a number that can move, 'cause guys can change, guys and gals can change their mind, we're gonna have seven retirements coming in two thousand eighteen.
That's a lot.
I know.
So that would be, so we're picking up, have we paid anything towards those three?
Yes, we have.
So we're like about half and half, or?
That's correct.
So that's where you come up with the eight and a half number, seven plus one and a half?
So, uh, just, just quickly to follow up on that, how are our recruitment policies going to replace some of these people? I know it's not the most popular job these days, you know? Are you having a tough time, uh, finding young people that wanna come in and make policing their career?
Um, actually, no. Uh, you, you know, uh, you, you think you would, um, uh, but, uh, you know, I request a list from civil service. You know, it's a long process to hire someone. Uh, they provide lists, people keep taking the exam, and I imagine they will, you know, for the next twenty years, is my guess, I, you know, I, um, but, uh, we're not having, I'm not struggling finding recruits.
Well, that's good. That's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
So, uh, let's just stay with that line since we're on it. Um, the mayor added a hundred and fifty thousand to this line over, um, what we budgeted this past fiscal year.
I'm sorry, sir, which line?
Uh, that's the sick leave buyback. So there's an extra one fifty in there, and I wanted to ask you about that. Is that, that's if you had the whole eight and a half and you funded everything in full here, is that, is that what's his thinking on that?
Uh, the mayor funded us, I believe it was at three fifty, and we asked for four. So, again, that.
We budgeted two hundred last year, and it didn't look like through the first half of the year, anything had been spent in that line.
Right, and, and normally it's not. It's, it's in the second half of the year when all the buybacks come up. For the most part, everybody retires. I'm making generalizations, January, February, March.
Okay, okay. Do you know how much you've spent in that line so far this year, offhand?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Alright, okay. Um, I'll have to look that up, but, um, alright. Is the thi, is the thinking behind putting more there because we're gonna fund in full all seven of those? Or do you think we're gonna do another, maybe half and half again this year?
That's in consideration of funding all seven.
Okay, okay.
You know, it, it's a, it's a judgment call. So, like, we're paying, three guys that retired this year took half. The last four that retired took it all. So, you, you know, so i- i- it's, it's really up to them.
Some guys have income tax implications, and there's different considerations, okay.
I, I just wanna, um, add that, um, we requested the, uh, four-thirty-one, um, that's on here.
Right.
And that's actually the, the true reflection of the eight and a half.
Okay.
Um, so if all seven did retire and the one and a half were paid their half.
We're still short.
That's what, the four-thirty-one would cover that.
I see, okay.
And I think by, by him adding the additional hundred, um, last year we had requested, um, a, a higher number, and he reduced it by almost three hundred thousand, and I believe we had a comeback for just over, um, a hundred thousand this year for, for that line item. So he kind of put that in there, um, hoping that, uh, we wouldn't have to come back again for that.
Allegedly, according to the auditor's office, two hundred was what was appropriated in that line this fiscal year. Just, just FYI.
Right.
Okay. And you had how many retirees this year?
Um, I think seven. Does that sound right?
Six.
What we just, well, we just lost four guys, right? And we're paying half of we we.
So we had six, but we funded three?
No, six and a half.
Yeah. Six and a half this year. Okay.
Something from last.
Okay, all right.
And and keep in mind, too, that that's some of that um, some of those funds come from people who resign um from the job as well, so.
Right. And maybe they don't get a true benefit.
Right, a full.
In that regard.
Right.
Yep, okay. Okay, so um, might as well just get right at it on one of these items. So as you know, Chief, uh, and Sergeant Hart, this is an oldie but goodie. Um, your old friend Kevin here has been talking about Quinn bill for quite a number of years, and I shut my mouth about Quinn bill, because we sort of had a détente on the issue. Um, where we were sort of level funding the police department. The view was, if you guys think Quinn bill's a priority, then great, yeah, have Quinn bill and uh we'll just make up for it in other areas, as long as we have an aggregated um sum equal to about twelve point three million dollars. That's gone on for the last two fiscal years, and that's kind of worked pretty successfully. One of the arguments that we heard in favor of preserving the Quinn bill was that, hey, there's fewer people that are getting it, and the number keeps going down every year. Just observation one is, the number didn't go down this year. It actually went up eighteen thousand dollars. So first of all, why is that if fewer people every year are on it? And um, two, the second portion of the punchline of my question is, your budget's up three hundred thousand dollars. So we went, your budget is, went from twelve point two three million to twelve point five six nine million. You want to tackle those two questions?
Sure.
Thank you.
The first part is uh the budget's up, quite frankly, because of the pay raises. That 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 that's really the impact on that budget. Um, and when you talk about the Quinn bill, the Quinn bill's up um eighteen, almost nineteen thousand, you know, if you look at that higher, it's almost nineteen thousand. The Quinn bill's up this upcoming year. But I what I would tell you that is, I believe that's proportionally insignificant. Bear with bear with my train of thought.
I'm listening. Yep.
So it's up, but the reason it's up is they got pay raises. If they got no pay raises, it wouldn't, because that offsets the Quinn and bumps the Quinn a little bit. Now, um, we have sixty-eight officers getting the Quinn right now, sixty-eight. Year before, we had seventy. Year before that, we had seventy-three. Year before that, we had seventy-eight. Year before that, we had eighty-two. Now, there's gonna be a bump up with a pay raise. However, in the net, in this next year we're going into, of the seven retirements that we're projecting of them, six of them collected, collect the Quinn, one doesn't. So what's gonna end up happening is, we're gonna go from sixty-eight officers getting it to sixty-two, and that number's gonna bump down. And even though they're gonna pay raise, it goes, but it's but the the bump down's gonna be more than what it's going up.
So how much of a pay raise did the department receive this past year, like patrolmen and superiors?
Sure, uh, they got um uh, they got a two fifty clothing allowance, which actually goes into the base pay.
All right, so let's see here. Clothes, isn't that a line somewhere in here, clothing allowance or?
No, that's separate. That's that's a different clothing.
Oh, that's a separate.
Right. And and then come July first, they're getting uh one and a half percent pay raise, and then come January first, they're getting another one and a half percent pay raise.
So three percent, basically. All right. It's getting tough to keep the the budget.
Keep it.
It's getting tough to get a level funded because of of the fact, I mean, we need to give raises, but the point, the point was that, you know, we sort of, those of us backed off on the whole Quinn bill issue, because the way I viewed it was, eh, it's a form of compensation, and you know, you can keep it, and you know, we'll we'll make up for it in other areas. Um, I guess it's 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 a little bit uh concerning that, you know, the really, the revenues are not really going up. They are going up a little bit, a little bit in the city, but you know, we got a one point three million dollar structural deficit that we have to close through some combination of, you know, we're gonna increase parking meters, maybe some portion, and you know, here, there, and everywhere, we gotta gotta figure these things out, and what little bit of free cash we have to to gap that. So um, you know, so let's let's see now, if we said um twelve, uh, let me just divide this out, twelve point six divided by twelve point um three equals. So your budget's up about two and a half percent, um, which obviously, as you stated, um, your expenses actually went down about eighteen thousand, but your personnel lines went up um three hundred and fifty thousand, and that's the pay raise issue, basically, right?
Kevin.
Okay, I'll just, I'll sort of stew on that, but go ahead.
Yeah, just just to go back to the uh to the Quinn, so that's um budgeted for um everyone who has it to the end of the year. So that's taken into account that if those retirees change their mind and don't retire.
Okay, so that could be lower if they
Exactly.
if they do in fact retire in January or whatever.
So that'll reduce that number.
So we we arbitrarily took the date of March, let's say they're all gonna retire in March. Uh, Katie ran the numbers, and she thought there'd be a twenty-three thousand dollar savings if they all left in March. Ju- ju- of of those six retirees.
I see.
And now, again, we're only talking a couple of thousand dollars, but it gets it.
Yeah, but you know, it's it it keeps us at least on that trend line theoretically of.
Yeah, the twenty-three versus the nineteen.
Right, right. Um, what do you think about, and I know we've talked about this before, changing gears now, um, about this criminal analyst position. Um, we have an order, Counselor Roman and I, and um, I know at one point to just sort of have maybe a civilian position, maybe in the forty grand range, to help you guys with some of this statistical stuff for grants. I know you guys do a ton of work on that. There's also a lot of concern um from a number of counselors about specific ward criminal statistics, sort of heat maps, if you will, uh, different things. Um, I mean, that's a lot of legwork um to have, and maybe, I don't know if the ROI is great on having a patrolman or a sergeant or captain, for that matter, doing that kind of work versus maybe a true analyst type position. Um, is that helpful? Um, you know, do you think there would be a good return on that? Because, I mean, there's this money, but then you've got all the grant money that you guys go out and get. You you know, it's kind of like, counselors need to be aware when we're looking at like the school department budget. It's like, yeah, there's this sixty-something million that we vote on, but don't forget about the other twenty over here that they get in grants. So what's your what's your thoughts on that, Chief?
Um, I'd be a big fan of uh of criminal analysts. Uh, everywhere I go, everyone I talk to, um, the cutting edge departments are doing it. I know someone years ago uh did it in Fitchburg, chief's retired, and he said, Jim, best money I ever spent.
Yeah.
Be- because, like you call it heat maps, I would call it hot spots or cops on the dock, for that matter, that can really drill down into the data. And quite frankly, not only does the police department get the great use of that data.
Right.
So do you, so do the mayor, so do your constituents. So and and again, we drill down, and then we try, and the reality is, when you have that information, that finite down to the detail there, what you're what you're really trying to do is predict tomorrow's crime.
Exactly.
And and in that way, anticipating based on previous behaviors and stats, you put the officer on the spot where you need it.
That's right. That's right. You know, because what I'm constantly thinking about, and you know, of course, I we do this at the hospital, is about, you know, deploying resources, right? You know, you know, where do we, how many doctors here, what shifts? How can we flex the staffing? When do we have patients coming in? All of this type of thing, and you know, uh, resource allocation. I mean, you're in the business of deploying um your troops, you know, of of deploying your resources at your disposal. Um, and to do that, I think it's data and intelligence is the key to 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 what you do, and to be able to have the resources to do that seems to me to be extremely helpful to you, you know, and it seems like we can do that for not a terribly, you know, terribly expensive cost.
Uh, no, and uh I I think it would be a big benefit to the city, and quite frankly, I I'm just being selfish.
Yeah.
My goal would be to use that data to drive crime numbers down.
Yeah, absolutely. I think you could do it, too. Because, you know, I mean, how many times, I'm sure, I mean, you just, you just not enough hours in the day for somebody like you guys, who are out there getting the bad guys, to to sit there and say, I gotta have, you know, we had this many things on this street corner and that much on that street corner. Um, for you to be able to have somebody that says, look, we, this was where we had this and this car accident and that type of thing, or or whatever type of uh type of crime, I think would be extremely helpful to you. And um, and then also to also point out things that maybe aren't happening. You know, one of the things that I've been really impressed that Mike McManus has done as DPW superintendent is done is to say, you know, frequently, we get asked, gee, everybody is speeding on this street, right? I mean, it's just, everybody's speeding, everybody's speeding, everybody's speeding. Mike says, okay, great. He runs out all these different tapes and different machinery that he puts out there, and it turns out, the eighty-fifth percentile average speed is, you know, one mile below the speed limit. And he goes, yes, you may see some car speeding, but it isn't as chronic of an epidemic as you think. Whereas, on the other hand, like we had one on um, I want to say it was Old Ferry Road, actually, where it turned out, people, everybody was saying, there is speeding, 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 and guess what? It turned out, the average, you know, speed of eighty-five percent of the cars was like seven miles over the speed limit. So it was it was true. And so we can take measures to say, you know, this really is or not. And um, I like us to, if we could, um, I mean, if you had a real finance department in the city, you know, and I know the auditors, you guys just do the best you can with the resources they have, and they're really the accounting function, but they're also expected to do budget and finance analytics, too, which is really challenging. Um, as we kind of think about how we do this smarter, I think this would be a good precursor as one of our key departments, you know, and one of our larger departments, to have you guys with this. And then I think the potential spinoff to this is getting some sort of finance or budget department for the whole city and and yeah.
The follow up on um a little bit on the traffic issues, uh, we we try to do, we don't do the the greatest job in the world of it, but we try to do um something called DDEX. And it 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 stands for Data Driven Data Driven Approaches to Crime and Traffic Safety. And we go back to what you talked about was the heat maps, and what when you when you have that data, where your crashes are, and you know, where your crimes are, and you overlay them, then you put your resources in both spots. So the officer doing extra traffic, wherever it happens to be. Granted, it's not, you know, you get you get a secondary effect in the crime area. It it's to try to match those two things to get twice the bang for your buck. I- i- and so it it looks at traffic patterns, traffic complaints, traffic accidents, and that sort of thing, and it tries to combine the two.
One of the things that I have heard about that other departments have done, and I wanted to mention it to you, was putting GPS devices in the police cruisers to um sort of just follow a year's worth of data. Where does this car travel for a whole year? And I it and you'd be really interested to know, you know, sort of the the physical cruisers, where are they, you know, and and you could get great data from that, to say, you know, uh, northeast street gets uh seventy-two percent of, you know, coverage of this particular area or something, or there's a cruiser there seventy-two percent of the time once a day. But on the other hand, County Road has one car drive by every three days. I mean, what does that mean? Um, you know, you tell me, you're the professional. But what I just think is, we should seriously consider some things that are like that to just have those data points um to to see um the collection of that. Like, I'll bet you, once, maybe, you know, once a month, a car goes over, you know, I don't know, picking up obscure street in Holyoke, but you know, whereas o- other areas, and it would be kind of interesting for you to be able, again, with an analyst, to say, well, you know what, people, sometimes constituents will say to me, I never see a police car go down my street, say, I don't know, take Liberty Street up in Ward Seven, there's never a police car that goes over this street. Well, you could turn around and say, well, you know, ma'am, or sir, you know, in actuality, I can show you that a car actually goes down that street three times a week, you know, or six times a week on average or something. I just thought that would be kind of interesting. And then, again, maybe it could also tell you the amount of time it's also spending in those certain sectors. Um, I just think that would be really uh good data for you to have.
I'm happy to have a conver- conversation with you offline on that some point.
Yeah.
I do think there's some um union implications on that, but I'd be happy to have that conversation with you.
Okay. Um, okay, great. I mean, because it would, I've been, I'm thinking of it, not person.
Yeah.
You know, we're not tracking officer so-and-so, we're just talking, tracking the vehicle where it's going around. Maybe there's some way to aggregate the data in such a way as it's not, you know, pinpointable back to one particular shift, but um I I think that would be some good data. Uh, so anyways, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. Um, to follow up on Counselor Jordan's point, um, I find myself, you know, looking at a twelve million dollar budget and totally seeing the value in data-driven decision-making. And just from our past meetings, there's a lot of data that you're collecting and submitting on a regular basis into state databases and other regional databases. So I find myself wondering, and certainly you would know better, if maybe a better use of money than creating another position would be to periodically bring in somebody on a consultative basis to crunch the data that's there. I don't think it's so much we have to collect it as to massage it and use it and apply it to your needs. So I'm wondering if somebody could come in, say, quarterly, and do that kind of thing as more of a consultant.
That true crimes analyst doesn't work that way. They drill down very specific, where they would get out uh weekly or daily reports to to the troops, so they.
For a day-to-day, real time.
Yes, so so they're getting
Okay.
good intel right away. Uh, you know, if we get in a series of breaks somewhere, they're gonna pick up on it.
So you're more talking real time. So from that perspective, would you have any capacity within the department, in the personnel that you have now that have any of those skills?
Um.
I I can address, um, right now, uh, we have a Shannon Grant, and we're utilizing a graduate student from UMass ju- just as an anal- analyst to
Okay.
to crunch some gang numbers and some heroin uh
Okay.
numbers that that we're utilizing as a kind of like an internship. So we're we're looking forward to uh possibly trying to get some more of those.
Thank you.
Um, Counselors, Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, thanks, Chief, and and thanks, Sergeant Hart, for coming down. Um, I'm just looking at the a couple of things in the budget here. Um, one that stood out to me was actually where the mayor proposed more, and I was wondering if that has to do with the halftime um thing with the buyback, vacation buyback. You asked for one twenty-two, and the mayor put down one thirty-one. Is that an error, or is that uh?
Um, I what what that was, was um, once we submitted the uh the budget, um, the raises weren't finalized yet, so with the raises, we had to amend that number. So that's the reflection of the of the true number, the one thirty-one, after the raises.
Oh, after the raises, okay. It did that, because the other ones didn't really go up after the raises, right? Just a vacation?
No, those those did um, those did show, except for the uh um vacation one. That's the only one that that didn't um fluctuate when when the raises uh came through.
Okay, so that's the that's the true number, then, the one thirty-one?
Yes, that's 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 the number we submitted with the amendment.
With the, okay, okay, because that just sort of stood out to me. Um, and and the all these amounts that are more for the tenants. Um, and, and the, all these amounts that are more for the lieutenants, captains, sergeants, that's because of the raises?
That's correct.
The amount? And you still have the same amount of each? Was there any changes? There's anybody acting, you know, as far as sergeants, lieutenants?
No.
They're all permanent?
Correct.
No acting positions right now?
And, um, I expect, I anticipate one supervisor rolling next year, cause one of the seven that are probably gonna retire as a supervisor.
Okay. And on the, um, the captains, you have four captains, do they all work inside or some of them outside on the street?
Uh, they all, they're, they're all desk duty, but I have a patrol commander who's on desk duty, but he goes out on the street. I have a, uh, Detective Division Commander oversees narcotics and the regular Criminal Investigation Bureau, uh, but he's out on the street too. He, he does both.
Both, okay.
Right. And then I have an administrative, uh, uh, captain that's really helps with budgets and grants and training, and, and he, he's kind of a catch-all. Meanings I can't make, he makes for me. Projects I can't get to, he takes care of those projects. And then I have an IT captain overseas, uh, uh, evidence, records, dispatch in IT.
Okay, good. Just hearing from people, sometimes there's a perception that everybody works inside, all the captains, and, and they're not out in the streets, so I just want the public to know that, that they're also out in the street too.
Uh, ye- yes, and, and, and I'll give you, you know, and they will respond to calls and such, but understand, they're an administrative desk jockey. You know, you know, people ask me what I do for a living, and I tell them I drive a desk, and then, and they go, what are you talking about? And I'd explain how I got into police work, and last thing I ever wanted to do was end up behind a desk, but that's where I am today.
And, and are those people, um, most of them work in day shifts, huh?
That's correct.
Okay, so are they also eligible to work overtime outside of their shift?
Yes.
Could, could that, is that usually a high number?
Yes.
Does that drive costs up? Is it, could that be somehow looked at to try to bring the overtime cost down, or some kind of shift change or something?
Are, are you suggesting I put the captains on an evening night or midnight shift? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, some, I mean, you do the job, but I'm just saying, if they're all in working days, and all of a sudden now they gotta go out at night, or they got a court duty or something, at their pay rate, aren't they getting a lot more money?
Yes, they are.
On overtime?
Yes, they are. But if I, I, I shift them to the evening, or I shift them to the midnights, when I'm looking for them for the day, I'm gonna be bringing, bringing them in during the day, and I'm gonna be paying them there.
So it wouldn't change things?
Uh, no.
I just wondered if there's other-
Their, their rate of pay is higher, it is.
Yeah, right. I just wondered if there's other people, that lieutenants or whatever, could do the job during the day that they may be doing, you know?
Well, I, I have shift lieutenants that, that run the shift on, on each shift.
Each shift?
That's their job. And they answer to the captain.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just looking at the cost, cause this is one of the highest overtime costs, I believe, in the, in the city, right? Um, and the amount you're getting this year is about the same amount you expended this past year for next year, the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Yes, yes.
Is that all money spent already?
Um, yes. Yes, yes, yes.
And we're at the end of the year, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
So that four-hundred-and-fifty thousand is spent?
Right.
Okay. Have you seen a change? Have you seen a drop over the last, do you have any figures of the last three years?
Yeah, I can give you overtime figures if you feel like.
Just wondered if it's been dropping, or?
No, it hasn't.
Oh, it hasn't?
So, realize, we have the, we get the four-fifty, or whatever that magic number is, we get special event overtime, and then we pump grant money in, into that overtime. So I'll give you an example. Uh, uh, we, we spent to date a million fifty-one. Uh, last year, we spent nine-sixty-four. Year before that, we spent a million fifty-one. Year before that, we spent nine-ninety-four. Two thousand thirteen, we spent eight-eighty-two. Two thousand twelve, we spent six-eighty-three. I'll just caveat with the, with the two thousand and twelve number, we had the cops hiring grant back then with six additional officers.
So that means, that's why the number is lower?
Correct.
Now, can you explain to me a little bit about the overtime money? Were you talking about grant money, so that means when you have special?
So, you know, we, we have all types of people working all different hours. You know, we have the Shannon Grant money, we have the MCP grant money, we have the G-S-U, we have step traffic, uh, so we try to get people out there, really all hours of the day, when we can.
Okay, so the true figure you're getting from the budget or from the city, you're getting four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, but with the grant, you're getting about seven-hundred-thousand you're utilizing?
Uh, we're using, we're utilizing the grants, we're utilizing everything to get the day done, to get, to get to the end of the day.
So if-
Just, just to give you a number, this year, um, we brought in approximately one-point-eight million in grants.
And a lot of that is used for overtime, huh?
Yeah.
Good portion of it?
Yes.
I'm just thinking, we, we heard with the block grant money and everything else with the state, uh, the money's dropping. So I'm just thinking, future years, that's something that's gotta be looked at, where now you don't have one-point-eight million in grants, you got eight-hundred thousand in grants, so, you know, and if you need that, that amount of, you know, overtime money, you know, the, the city's not gonna have the money to kick in, I don't think, that extra three-hundred thousand, if you know what I'm saying.
Right.
So it's just something to think about, uh, down the line, I think, in the future, cause, um, it just seems the federal government and the state government just doesn't, everything's dropping, and I think it's something that we have to be aware of, you know, um, in the future. Um, how many in- individuals you have injured on duty right now?
Uh, four or five. I, again, I didn't, uh, but I give you, hang on, I think I have something here for you on that, um, I can't remember where I put it. Uh, I O D, uh, let me see, that's. We spent in the neighborhood of, um, I O D, we spent in the neighborhood of a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand this year. Um, that equated to, uh, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine shifts where somebody was I O D so far. Uh, I didn't get the number, um, but, uh, number of shifts that we lost somebody to military duty was two-hundred-and-eighty-five shifts. So all those things impact.
Impact the overtime too. The, the, the individuals out on, um, injured on duty, are there some of them long-term, or some of them just short-term, you know, cause?
Uh, so, some, some it's a, a couple of weeks, uh, some it's a day or two, uh, some are months on end. You know, you, you, you tweak a knee, just to get an MRI appointment takes you a month at, at best speed, right? You know, and then they gotta go see the orthopedic, and that all takes time.
And, and we don't see that anymore, I mean, on the budget, cause it's taken right out of their salary given to them?
Well, it, it gets transferred over.
Transferred over.
I think you see the transfers.
You see the transfers now.
Right. Now we do, we did before.
Under the new law, we see the transfers.
But you don't see the money in the, you don't see the money in the budget, but it just comes from their-
Salary, yeah.
Their salary line.
Yeah, right.
Well, that's another thing, and I, and I stated with the, with the chief, I, I think, you know, keeping a healthy department, and I know things happen, I mean, it's a tough job, you're out there every day, you're running after people, and, but a healthy department keeps people fit, it cuts down on the overtime costs. And, you know, if you have two people on injured on duty, or you have six, you just stated, all these people that are out, it affects your overtime too.
Oh, without a doubt. And, um, you know, I, I concur, a healthy department's the best way to go. Uh, I know, was it two years ago, the city started working on the wellness program? And we brought people in, and we had, uh, two of my officers, uh, one's no longer with us, uh, were involved in that, in, in fitness for the police department and counseling the employees, trying to get them healthy. Uh, cause, you know, obviously, you know, a fitter employee, happier employee, less chance of injury, less chance of back injury, but then sometimes they're just, um, bad guys out there that we-
Part of the job.
I mean, uh, somebody tried to run down two of my officers yesterday in a car. So I've just, you know, some, and, and they had to dive out of the way. So I just, it's, you know, the, the guys and gals do a great job, uh, but, you know, uh, could we do better on our fitness? Certainly. I know I could, and I try, and then I go home and sometimes I eat a grinder, and it tastes good, and I regret it the next day.
I, and I, I think that's important, and, and I was part of that wellness committee, and I worked with the, the city for about a year with, um, you know, the DPW, the police, the fire, you know, the gas electric, uh, even city hall employees. I think, you know, a, a fitter employee pool is, is, is better all around, and people feel good, and they go to work, and they're gonna stay worked, they're gonna stay healthy, and, uh, you know, that's one of the things I like to, to continue to sort of harp on, I think, uh, you know, fitness, and I know you have a great gym down there. Um, and if, you know, hopefully people, you know, a lot of the, the, your employees work there, I mean, utilize it on a regular basis.
They do, trust me.
Which is, which is important.
That gym gets you squat a bit.
Yeah. Just one, what, a brief question on your, um, all your maintenance, repairing maintenance, um, cause I know usually at the end of the year, you're sort of running low on stuff. Um, do you feel this is a fair budget as police maintenance, uh, vehicles, uh, repairs?
Well, you know, I always worry about the cars, and we got six new cars coming in, which is good, uh, but that's, that's usually a struggle for us. We've had to come back a couple of times for additional motor vehicle money. Um, I think we had to do that last year.
Right, I thought too, yeah.
Repairs and supplies.
Okay.
Um, I mean, we, we make do with the best we can with what we have.
Okay.
And, and I'm, uh, you know, I'm gonna say, you know, we'll have to make do with whatever you give us, and then we'll do the best we can to come within that budget.
And I'd be remiss not to say something that one of my, um, constituent, and, and actually a business owner talked to me about, and, um, he had an idea about police cars, about getting a police car, and I know we always get the new ones, but this was a used police car from another state, and it didn't have a lot of miles on it, it was in good shape. Um, would that be something that the police department would ever look at to save costs, or would you think it'll be just something that would cost more in the long run with maintenance and everything?
Um, I, I've entertained that idea, to be honest with you. And then, um, uh, the problem is, you know, maybe you could do that for a second or third-tier car, you can't do that for a line car. Online cars are running twenty-four-seven, and they're running hard.
I know that.
I wouldn't, I would not put, we would, we would kill that car fairly quickly if we made that a line car.
Right, that's what I, I, I feel, yeah. Cause I, I, I told this individual that, and, um, but there's something maybe down the road, um, if something came available, I guess there's some type of thing you can look up where vehicles, police departments are getting vehicles that have low mileage, and might be a backup vehicle or something for, say-
A counselor at one point-
Twenty thousand dollars or something.
Counselor, I was at one point looking online at cars out of Florida, to try to figure out how to fill the fleet. Uh, the, the problem is, I wouldn't put them in a regular line fleet, cause it won't last.
And you said the cars are coming in?
I think hopefully within the next month.
And what, what was the average cost of the vehicle?
Uh, forty-two, something like that.
Yeah, it was forty-two.
Forty-two.
Okay, and you have how many?
Six.
Okay, what, what happens if there are other cars that need to be replaced?
So, uh, they get added to the fleet, whatever is, um, we have like three tiers of cars. The primary cars, the second tier, and the third tier. And, uh, the mechanic for, that works for us with the DPW Jimmy does a great job, and Paul Chikovitch, one of my officers, Paul will go through and assess the car, assess the cars. And anything that we can keep, we keep. Everything that's not worth putting any more money on, we'll chunk. Sometimes you'll cannibalize the parts, sometimes you can kind of pretend like it's gonna go to an auction, but it's not really worth anything. By the time we're done with a car, there's nothing left.
There's not much left, yeah. Any average life of a car? How many thousands of miles?
Hmm, I, I would say most of our fleet's got over a hundred thousand now.
So about a year, car, year and a half?
No, we got some older, it depend, it depends where it is in the line. The line cars are running, maybe you're putting fifty thousand miles on a year, maybe you're putting thirty-five, forty. The second or third tiers, they're not being driven as much, so you can kind of get a little bit longer of a life out of it. Again, it's just, uh, what the mileage is, and then mechanically how sound is, have we had to replace the transmission or not.
Okay.
But, 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 you know, that, that's kind of like a, that's a juggling act, you know, between the mileage and the, and the condition of the car.
Okay.
And occasionally, unfortunately, we get in crashes too.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I agree, we voted for the, um, the newer cars, and I hopefully, um, they'll last, you know, and of course, some things you can't ha- prevent, um, accidents and chases, but, um, I think, uh, safety-wise, um, these cars are needed, well-needed over the past couple of years, and, uh, I think it's important, hopefully, that we'll get them soon and, and get the, uh, the men and women out there with those.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Council McGivern.
Thanks, Cap. Chief, what is the total amount of cars in the fleet?
Uh, I brought my old list, so I, bear with me. This was the list, I think, when we applied for the new cars, so, if I can find it.
I think it was between th- thirty-eight and forty, maybe?
Uh, no, I think it's like somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five. Uh, where is that? I, I, I mean, I was looking at this, I know, I was looking at it.
Chief, we, I mean, we can go with the, you know, with the rough.
Yeah, I, I apologize, Counsel.
No, no, that's fine. The question is, now, the que- the real question is, you're getting six new ones, but they're the first new cruisers you've gotten over the last three years?
Uh, be a little over two years.
Two years, a little over?
Yeah, two years, three months.
Okay, so about two years, three months. Um, we, with a fleet the size of forty-plus, replacing two cars per year doesn't make it?
No, no, sir, it does not.
You have no requests in this budget for new cruisers, but we know you need them. What are you looking for this year?
Um, well, we had this conversation earlier today. Um, so, go back in time, used to get six cars every twelve to eighteen months. Then we had some discussion, we had some discussion with finance about could we do three cars every twelve months, which is really the same as six every twelve to eighteen, just about, which was fine, but we never got caught up, so we're behind. I would need three cars almost instantly, and then we did, get us close to being caught up, and then we could look at doing three cars, maybe per year.
Okay. Can you give us the number of cars in the fleet, but also get us the, uh, where they stand in terms of mileage and, and status? And, and I think we need to start talking about that. Um, it's not in the budget, we can't add to the budget, so right now, it's just, it's a good conversation, but maybe not one for tonight. What- If, if I can just say, um, we, we submitted a, a capital budget, and I believe the cruisers are in that. Okay, did we get the capital budget this year?
No, it must be attached to last year's capital budget.
Yeah. We're supposed to get a copy of that when we're doing the budget. Why do we keep asking these questions? Did you notice they don't even have capital outlay in the budget anymore?
I know, they actually, they figured they'd save trees by just eliminating the ink, ink and line for you.
Yeah, so we, even if there is a budget, we can't put it in the budget, cause there's no place to put it.
Yeah.
Chief, I, I think you came in at the time, and Herbie asked Chief Pond about, uh, a couple of things, um, the usual, you know, the overtime and, and, and where we are in terms of staffing, and it's, you know, your budget's pretty clear, as far as I'm concerned. But the, the overtime, I do have some questions, but I wanna do a different, is, you know, you meet with the mayor tomorrow, and we learned this week through our, the, through the auditor, that the state projected, that the budget's based on state, you know, state aid, on state, uh, monies. Uh, the monies that it was based on are not there, they've been cut significantly. So the mayor's either gonna leave it up to us to cut the budget, or the mayor's gonna sit down with you guys tomorrow and start saying, you know, we got three months to figure this out, you know, unless, unless, you know, those monies are replaced, which could happen on the state level, and sometimes we don't know that until October. But Chief Pond said he's returning eighty thousand dollars in overtime to the city this year, projected. What's the police department returning to the budget for next year?
I believe we're returning at least fifty thousand dollars, uh, on the personal services side, and then we have twenty-five thousand dollars coming back from the drug testing, And then we have twenty-five thousand dollars coming back from the drug testing, coming back to the city.
On the expense side?
On the expense side, thank you, Joe.
So, I, I think it's always important, I, I think trying to spend money at the end of the year just cause it's there defeats the purpose of trying to get through to next year, and I, I hope you know what I'm saying. Overtime. You're gonna spend it all?
Yeah, pretty much.
Weekend, weekend, not weekend, what's that, what's it called? Parade week? Parade weekend festivities and fireworks. It's like the same number every year.
Well, um, actually, the, our parade weekend number's actually up. What you're seeing is not reflective of what we spent. Spent sixty, sixty-one on parade weekend.
So that line item was exhausted come March twenty-first, there was no money left. And there's no money left in that line item, Bellamy, after March twenty-first? And we could say the same, though, the other one kind of covers more than one event. And then, you threw out four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but didn't we add to the general overtime account this year? How much did we add?
Yeah, from the previous year was three fifty, so he had added, um, uh, actually, last year was four fifty, the, the year before that was three fifty. And this year is the same amount as we got last year.
But do we add during, during the course of the year, do we add additional dollars?
No, this year we, we didn't come back for overtime. Bellamy, do?
We, we transferred money in from, from other, from grants, I think that's what you're talking about. Pretty casual move, but you move money in from grants, the PSAP grant. Was moved to overtime, right?
Right, correct.
Chief, those dollar figures you've, we're talking about earlier, does that include the grants?
Yes.
A lot of overtime.
Well, that, that's, you, you have to keep in mind, the overtime isn't just for police on the street. It covers the whole department. So that's dispatchers, that's the records personnel, that's all the civilians, that's the matrons, the whole department.
Off the top of my head, we were, uh, short-staffed in records, I'm, I'm, well, records, but, uh, dispatch. We spent a little over a hundred thousand dollars just on that this year.
Well, if I look at this line item here, your request is not met by the mayor in dispatch, all right? So is that gonna continue?
Well, the overtime that gets created in there, we end up paying out of the overtime account. I, I'm just saying, we've had, we've had shortages in dispatch, plus I have, uh, a couple of employees that have some, um, personal issues. And then, uh, we've had some staffing issues in records.
I, I don't doubt it, I'm not, I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning is, where are we gonna find the money? Or what, well, if the mayor says to you tomorrow, you gotta cut the budget, where are we gonna cut it? Help us out. Captains are administrative, can we get rid of one captain?
No, I think if you're gonna cut the budget, what you're gonna end up doing is, through attrition, is not replacing people that retire.
Usually, the people retiring are officers.
Yeah, what are the grades of the people that are the seven that you've identified as retired?
One sergeant and six patrolmen.
We eliminated a captain position, does everybody get up to motion, down one grade? How does that work?
Don't know.
Or is it just whoever's the junior captain gets laid off?
Nah, I would think they would be, probably get bumped back to their last rank.
They're, uh, going from historical and I'd, we never had, have to do, do it again, but you bump back.
Well, there was a whole debate, we had a whole debate in here about whether or not we restore that fourth captain position, we ended up doing it, but that, there was three for quite a while, and then we, then we decided to, to fill it, and that's where Captain Dugay ended up getting the fourth position.
But I, you also had a deputy chief too.
Oh, God, we haven't had a deputy chief in twenty-five years. Twenty-five years, yeah, twenty. That was eliminated, by the way, just so you know the history on that. When the police department went out there and was campaigning in favor of the tax override in nineteen ninety-one, they said, "If the voters vote for this, we will give up the deputy chief." So, it passed and, uh, the deputy chief went bye-bye. In fact, we eliminated that, that actually was a deputy marshal position, we had to change a special act, and we changed it in the law. So that went ta-ta.
If, if, if you're talking about eliminating positions, I, I, there's definitely gonna be a strong union, uh, kickback and concern.
Even if they're vacant?
Yes.
Yeah, but, but.
How many are filled right now? How many patrolmen do we have right this minute?
Eighty-seven.
How many did you have la- last year, like a year ago this time? So it just kind of fluk- it sort of slides, eighty-seven to ninety, eighty-seven.
My questions are done, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Vacan, and then I would like the auditors, if you could start gravitating towards, uh, at least one or both of you to come up, because I'd like to address this revenue issue that you sent to, out to us. We could take a minute to discuss this recent drop in state aid, like to take, uh, ten minutes to plumb into that a little bit, and then, um, cause that's gonna impact our police and fire budget, um, as the biggest departments, and just kind of where, where we're going with the revenue side.
I just have a quick follow-up question.
You have the floor, yep.
Thank you. Counselor Tomlin did a very good job of articulating the overtime issue, um, in the captain description. And what I'm interested in knowing is, what are the two main drivers of the really high amount of overtime for the captains?
What do you mean by drivers?
Drivers, what is the cause, the, what is the need that leads to them as a,
Right, why do captains need overtime?
Having so much. Right, some, some captains are assigned a specific duty and job that only they can do as being the head supervisor.
And so like, what is that? Like, what is the nature of?
Like the head, like the head of the detective bureau, the, the captain who oversees the detective bureau and the narcotics. So when there's a murder that occurs, that captain is notified and he comes in and organizes all the detectives to go out and start that case. And that case could go on for, forever if it's not solved. So, some of those costs. Also, captains, like every other union member, supervisor, union member, is entitled to overtime just as much as a sergeant is. So i- if an overtime rate, uh, or, or job comes up, that captain is entitled to it just as much as a sergeant is. So it's called fair and equitable distribution of overtime, so that's a, uh, would be a union issue.
So the only salaried person in the whole department is the chief?
Correct.
And my secretary.
And your secretary.
Who hasn't had a raise.
Lucky her.
Well, no, she hasn't had a raise in eleven years.
Simple keeper.
Okay, so that would be one example. So, what you're saying is, in the contract, there is no flexibility as in a typical salaried position, that if your job requires you to work later, one night, you come in later the next day, so you don't have to work sixty hours, you can flex your forty.
No.
And they do that at their discretion, if they choose to?
Uh, contractually, it doesn't work that way. When, if they're working, I gotta pay them. And I can't imagine tomorrow when I said, "Yeah, I'm not gonna pay ya," not gonna say, "Okay, lots of luck."
Well, okay, so I'm not trying to be facetious here, but I've been in an employment situ- circumstance where, say for example, you had to lay people off.
But you weren't union. I think the punt, Linda, we go through this every year, and I just, in fairness to you, and so to waste, not to waste your time with frustrating answers, you're gonna find out all of this is governed by union rules, and the chief just has to pay all these people exorbitant amounts of money, there's no flexibility, it's, it just is what it is.
Counselor Vacan, I hear what you're saying, uh, but I have to work within these contracts.
No, 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 and I'm not, that's the point I'm making. The point I'm trying to make is that if we are literally at the point in the budget debate where we are seriously entertaining eliminating a position, I'm just asking the question if the employees themselves have any discretion in that regard. I totally understand union contracts, I've worked in a union environment, I'm not going there, I'm asking a different question.
Well, I guess the other thing would be is, some of my employees, supervisors included, captains included, don't bill me for every second that they're here. They go above and beyond. My four captains work very, very hard for the city. Quite frankly, I would struggle to run the police department without them.
Well, and I don't think anybody's suggesting that anybody doesn't work hard. I mean, that's not the gist of the question. It's more looking at the potential for flexibility than it is
Right.
Anything else.
So, so it, uh,
Yeah.
On your point, as far as, um, union, unions go, if it came down to where there were layoffs, you wouldn't have the ability to pick and choose who you wanna lay off.
Correct, correct. I understand that.
So, by going high, trying to pick a captain right off the bat, just because to save costs, I don't think that the union's gonna buy that. I think if, if you're gonna try and save costs by, by reducing salary, I think you're gonna have to go the way of, of layoffs would go. So it would be just the opposite. That's just an opinion, my, my own.
What, what does that mean? I don't, so, uh, tomorrow, we cut one of the captain positions, what happens?
Well.
It's all subject to appropriation, so some captain's out of a job, and then there's a domino effect, right?
Well, no, I, I, I don't think the captain would be out of a job, I think the, the, the union would fight it, they'd bring it to court, and, and they'd.
Yeah, you'd lose that one. Cause we already have, there's already outstanding cases, we, we're not required to fund these jobs. Just, we could, we could cut, we could cut a captain's position tomorrow if we wanted to.
So the union would, would, would argue and say, "Well, a captain makes a hundred thousand, take two patrolmen who were just hired, he has seniority." So what's the difference? See, that's, that's what I mean by, by the laying off. You, you can't go.
But if you lay off patrolmen, it comes to a point, you need less supervisors.
Yeah.
Those hand in hand.
Right.
You know, when, we already had the perfect example is, the union came to the city and got rid of a deputy chief to save money.
But that, that was through, through contractual agreements, through, through the union.
No, it was budgetary. Union was in agreement with it, but it was budgetary.
Are there any, any superior officer positions currently vacant?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
We, we don't have to go there just yet, but, uh, what I did wanna say is, um, before we get to the auditors, I just wanted to kind of punch through some of these other lines, if you could just kind of go through with these in a sort of a lightning round, if you will. I see that, um, fireworks and festival overtime is up ten thousand. Is that absolutely necessary, or do you think you could manage on the sixty you had last year? It's budgeted now to seventy.
Um, well, what I would tell you is, um, the difference would be go, we get pushed over into the parade weekend.
All right.
Cause the parade weekend is short.
Okay. It's just that we gotta find something in here, some, something's gotta give, and I'm trying to keep things as, as reasonably levels. Sick leave bonus went from twenty-four to forty. Could we keep that at twenty-four? Is that possible, or? Seems like it's been running twenty-four for the last couple of years.
Yeah, hang on, let me find my notes on that.
Which one, um,
Sick leave bonus.
Um, on the, the reason that went up, because that was another, um, uh, added thing to this year's contract for the supervisors. The patrolman had that in their contract for years, and the supervisors didn't. This is the, uh, the first time that that came in, so that's the, the reason for that.
So we, we just added on sixteen thousand and more comp? I mean, six, twenty-four to forty, that's a pretty big jump, I mean, there's no, it doesn't achieve, I mean, I, I mean, who the, I mean, just doesn't seem like there's any austerity here, I mean, it's three hundred thousand, that's a lot.
I understand.
I mean, I know you're just the guy that's running the place, I mean, there's only so much you can do, but, you know, I don't know. Okay, let's ask about this one. Vacation buyback is up ninety-five to one thirty-one.
That's the.
The year before, that was fifty-two, so that's retirees, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All right, so we gotta think about how we wanna approach retirees, that's a whole big question, that's the one fifty. Do we do all those at once, you know, do we do a half and half? We may have to revisit that one. Make some cuts here and revisit that as the year goes along, um, see how it, see how it plays out. You know, maybe we, can we, could we level fund potentially the Quinn bill? If we took the eighteen out and then readjusted it later in the year, if, if it ends up people don't leave as it's projected?
Certainly.
We could add that maybe, all right.
You could do that.
We'll think about that one. Repair and maintenance, motor vehicles, um, you've had year, one year you had sixty-seven. Budgeted this year was about fifty-seven, this year went to sixty. You probably need the sixty, you think?
I think so.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, repair and maintenance of the building and grounds, we gave you fourteen-seven this current year. That went up to seventeen-five. Do you think you need, you think you could squeeze two grand out of there, or do you think you need all that?
To, to be honest with you, if you look at the expense side compared to last year,
It's down.
It's down, and, and.
It is down.
And this is as tight as, as you're gonna get. If, if you, if there's gonna be any wiggle, wiggle room, it'll be on the personnel side.
Okay. All right, um, okay, guys, appreciate everything you guys do, you really do, uh, you're doing, uh, God's work out there every day, keeping people safe, we really appreciate it. Before we break up, I would like to have the auditors just come in and to kind of give us a quick update on the revenue issue. Um, some new information that's come to light, and we just on the state appropriation. Um, I don't know if you wanna hang out for that, Chief, or not, but, um, we thank you so much. If there's any counselors that have follow-ups, I'll just tell them to email you.
Okay. Counselors, thank you, I appreciate your support. Again, I really appreciate the support on the radios and the cars.
Of course.
And, um, happy to work with you on the budget.
You guys are doing a great job, just keep it going down there, okay?
Thank you.
We really appreciate your, what you're doing for us. Thank you. So, uh, Bellamy and Josh, I'll try, we'll try not to take too much of your time, but I'd like to take five or ten minutes and just understand the implications of some recent communication to us about the revenue side and where local aid may be going. So I got a report here that says fiscal year eighteen local aid estimates, and it has a number that's about four hundred and forty thousand-ish less than what was in the governor's proposal. So, what are we, what are we thinking about state aid at this point?
Uh, so you're, you're.
You got some charters, you got charter money.
You're referring to the memo that I sent you with the attach, I just wanna make sure that we're talking about the same thing. I don't have a copy with me, but it included the, uh, a printout from the, from the state that shows the evolution of the state assessments and, and state aid,
Exactly.
Starting with the governor's budget, and then moving to, I can't remember what the second step was.
Uh, sure, it, it's, uh, gov- it starts off with
Governor's.
Current cherry street estimate, governor's budget, and then houseways and mains.
And I, um, as I remember, the difference in the net from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen was about eight hundred thousand dollars, is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay. So there are still two more steps in the process, there is the senate budget, and then the final reconciled budget between the senate and the house. I'm pleased to say that the senate budget, uh, uh,
Is better?
Is better by two hundred thousand dollars from what you're seeing.
Okay.
So the, so right now, the differential is about six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we'll see what happens with the final budget, and, and nobody can predict what's gonna happen, whether the, the senate budget will prevail, whether they'll give us more or less. So we're off about six hundred thousand dollars, so, so
So does that mean the one, just so I have a good thirty thousand foot view, when the mayor submitted the budget, he said we're currently short one point three, does that mean, at, at least as the tally stands now, we're like one point nine?
No, that's in the one point three.
That's in the one point.
Yes, that's in the cherry, yeah, in, in the cherry, in the estimate we gave you,
Yeah.
We, we use those numbers, so the eight hundred thousand dollar deficit is in, is built into the,
Okay.
The one point three.
So nothing has gotten worse?
So nothing has, no, nothing has gotten worse. I'm gonna repeat that, nothing has gotten worse. In fact, it's actually gotten better, because the senate, the senate budget.
Assuming that shakes out.
But at least, well, for the moment, we can, we can live in La La Land and say it's gotten better.
Okay.
We don't know what's gonna happen next.
Okay.
Good, it sounded worse.
All right.
But it sure sounded worse.
Okay, just sounded worse, okay, so there's no.
So I've already made you feel better, right?
So there's no cause for alarm at?
For a minute.
All right.
No, there's no cause for alarm, you know, this happens from year to year. And, you know, we on our side as the city have to do things to, to absorb the vicissitudes of the state.
Right.
And, you know, I can point out on the cherry sheet, some of the things we're doing to absorb that. For example, we've asu- assumed six hundred thousand dollars more in taxes because of, uh, increased assessments.
Yes.
And investments.
Yes.
Uh, we have assumed two or three hundred thousand dollars more in local. Uh, we have assumed two or three hundred thousand dollars more in local revenue because of such things as, as more hotel taxes, more meal taxes, the, 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 whatever that agreement is we get with the marijuana, we get fifty thousand dollars a year, things like that, so.
Yes.
Um, we also have this one-time windfall from, um, our assessor, where the Verizon case was settled, and we get a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar, um, bonus by reversing some, some reserves that we had set up. So there's a lot of money on the, the positive side that has helped to offset that, but nonetheless, as this budget stands, the deficit is one point three million.
Okay. I just wanted to ma- I'm glad we were able to clarify that, because I was getting the impression like something had changed.
No.
And it was getting, uh, this is new information, okay. So then that makes me feel better.
Good.
And.
Yay!
And then, um, keep us posted on what the conference committee and all that.
As soon as we get that, we'll let you know, that, that probably won't be till early August, that's, that's about the timeline, that, that it comes out.
Then this is the best we're gonna be able to do, based on one, our timeline, because we're, we're done with this in two weeks.
Right.
That was sent to you, Morse, you had a little bit more line-by-line detail than what you guys, in the overall here.
I see.
Counselor McGivern wanted to know, kind of, you know, of all this money, where, how much is chapter seventy, how much is charter schools, it's over, and all that breakdown was in that document.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, if there's nothing further.
Well, we ended on a happy note, that's good.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everyone.
We get the chiefs back in here for the weekend.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Sorry, chiefs. That was a good thought.
All right. Well, better safe than sorry, Joe. Yeah.
We're having so much fun.
Well, I, did you read it the same way I did?
I read it the same way, too. I just, I didn't read it deeply. You know, because you get it and you read it quickly, and you see, you know, certain things run by you. Well, right, and then, especially when you're in a hurry, you're trying to, you know, look at stuff before the meeting. You're not studying.